Those are good questions, so I hope that answers.
So you're telling 2023 will be exactly 2024?
Well, it depends on how many parking tickets get written and if there's no other case law or problems happen along the way, you know, I heard earlier about crystal balls.
You heard.
I'm guessing. Anything, any other questions?
No questions for Karen?
Please.
Welcome, good. This is my pleasure. I don't have a PowerPoint, so I'm just amazed at the PowerPoint and with all the police chiefs and the fire department, everybody. So anyway, but I'm going to give you a little bit of an executive summary. I was sitting at my desk, Terry and I talked, I knew what she was going to speak on, so I'm trying not to be redundant. But I thought, what would the city council like to hear? Putting myself in your position. Try to be brief, give me three or four minutes. Here's my thoughts. I'm going to break it up into little bite-sized things. Overall, Cheney Municipal Court does a good job at processing cases. We do a very good job at that. I'm very confident in that. We pinch pennies. You're seeing what we do and we're actually in this building every other Thursday. We have nothing extravagant in our budget, period. Nothing, zero. We survive state audits, have no concerns that I'm aware of, which is a big deal. I don't know of any complaints by any attorneys. I know that there may be a few complaints by defendants, but service is very important to us. We understand that it reflects on each of you. If at any point you have an issue or hear an issue about our service, let me know, for sure. We have a court administrator named Terry Cooper. She has been the court administrator for like 20 years or so, or more than that. Yeah. People in the state look up to Terry. Terry's a leader. Everybody looks at Terry and says, this is Terry, but Terry is a leader among the court administrators. We have a very small staff. We have a clerk, we have a probation person, and we have Terry. The two newer people have been there about two years, they're on board, they're still learning, we're okay. We move on. Court is a budget drainer. It's a budget drainer. Each municipality has to have a court. You've got to have a court. There are ways of going about that. You've chosen one way, but no matter what way you go, you've got to feed the court. It's like, we can't, you're feeding the fire department, you're feeding the police department, you're feeding the court. No way of avoiding that. It's just figuring out what the best way of providing those services. Some things that we have done, Terry touched on it, are we saving you money? The Zoom thing is working out very well for the court, and we'll continue with that. We're working on, and I think Terry touched a little bit, jail alternatives, that's electric home monitoring. When we send somebody to jail, though, we get a bill, don't we, Terry? We get a bill, so we're trying to figure out, you know, how do we, how do we lower that? You know, we send the long-term people to Lincoln County if we can, but we have to pay those bills. How would cost containment, how do we control costs? The largest issue, our employees. How do we do it? Well, I just said, we just have a three-person court, we have a traveling judge. The judge comes out here 25 times a year. Pretty hard to get more lean than that. Pretty much hard. On the supply side, you know, the court is not a fund generator. I've got a lot of enthusiasm, but I can't go out and market our product, can't do it. We're dependent upon the police, we're dependent upon the parking people. The legislature also restricts, and very importantly, how we collect from certain people that are indigent. Most of our people are indigent. We can't collect a lot of fees from them. This is a change, came into account a couple of years ago. So what do I lose sleep over? Here's my five things. This is what, take notes on this one. What do I lose sleep over? I lose sleep over number one, possible transitions. I say possible. She was a little, she was not sure that she's retiring. If Terry retires, there's going to be a transition. The thought is, how do you replace somebody that's not replaceable? Pretty tough. Judge Leland's going to have to do some administrative work that Judge Leland hasn't had to do since Judge Leland is out here. I'm going to have to rely on a lot of friends here. Number two, the staff side and keeping the doors open. Where is number two? How do we do that? We have three people. If one person is down, we're down to 30, we're down 33%. If two people are down, we're down 66%. Can't keep the doors open with one person, really. We can't go out on First Street and get somebody to move our furniture. We need people that are, that pass security tests and all of that. So being such a small staff, how do we do that? That's very much a concern. Got some issues. Cost and other factors we cannot control, this is number three. The jail, we get a bill, we can't do anything about that. Some of our partners are not necessarily accommodating like we would like them to accommodate. Big one on this one, this is huge, this keeps me up, jury trials. We don't have many jury trials. But the biggest issue that pertains to our court is selection of the prosecutor and the public defender. And I can say, I don't know who does that, I don't select them, because that would be a conflict. I guess it's Mark and the mayor and others, but they could make things pretty difficult by setting trials. They work through and they are able to resolve, but huge issue. Now, number four, other thing that keeps me up at night, these grants. There's a lot of money there, $345,000, $43,000 to do all this technology, great. The state of Washington has been very, very generous, very generous. Terry has done an absolutely exceptional job of getting those funds. You don't realize that, she has. But it comes down to sustainability of those funds. How do we keep, essentially what we're doing is we're building a little bit of an addition, not literally, but figuratively. And so what's going to happen when these funds dry up, so to speak? Or maybe they won't, but that's where the legislature comes in. But it worries me. We hire people, we set up programs and so on, how do we do that? I'm for it. I want to, I want to, I want to do that. But we have a lot of people that come to Cheney to do crime, and so how much of those people do we support with all of our programs? It's our court, everybody's court, everybody's court here. Looking into the future, the delivery system. Mark and I had a meeting a week or so ago, a couple of weeks ago now, good meeting, at least on my part, and I thought it was interesting. We talked about the different delivery systems and the, you know, what this is going to look like in the future. And I'm sure that you've talked about it as well. What we are doing here works, but should we move to a more regional system? And there are pluses and minuses to that, I'm pretty conversant on that. Or you can go with the district court, you can go, I worked there Monday through, Monday through Friday, except for the time I'm out here, very cognizant of that. In the end, come out and see us in action on Thursdays. We're pretty darn busy. We start at 8:30, we go to probably 4:00 or so, we take a break at noon. It's very interesting, it's very interesting. Taxpayers and others that come before us, I love it, and I take pride of being part of this. We're all in this together. I take pride of being part of the city. I enjoy it. That's it, that's my, that's my feel. So those are five or six things. Oh, and Terry brought up one, and now it's making me, it's a case management system, case management system. Yes, the state has had issues in implementing computer programs and all of that, Mark and all those. Now I've got something else to think about. You know, how do we, how do we implement a system? Not sure, not sure. So those are the things that keep me up, those are the challenges, but all is good. We run a good court and we perform, I think, a good service, but it is a drain, I get it. And you're putting money here where you could plant trees, you know, that's going down first, but you, you've got to do it, you've got to do it. So anyway, thank you for all of your time.
Thanks, good. Any questions for Judge Leland? Thanks for your service, Judge.
Yeah, we really appreciate you coming out and getting our judge here in Cheney. I think a better judge can come out here and provide a service.
This is a public hearing, so I'm going to open it up for the public to comment on the municipal court 2023 budget presentation. Yes, Karen, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Karen, my address is 411 Presley Drive. I just, I'm curious, I noticed that you, you mentioned that the criminal charges are down, and I'm just wondering how, and you also stated that the, that the municipal court relies heavily on the police department. And so does your budget rely also on making sure that the police department is fully stacked and so that they can do their jobs so that the, like, the criminal charges, that those are down, or are those down for a whole nother reason? I'm just trying to get some clear pictures regarding, like, I know that we've been short-staffed on our, in our police department lately.
Yeah, so the two are completely separate, the judicial branch and the executive branch. The executive branch is where the police department resides. They're under the direct supervision of the mayor and council. And then the judicial, which is the court, is completely separate. So that is not true, that yes, I just noted that historically, compared, looking back 10 years, the criminal charges are down in the court. We are not dependent on the funding because of the cases that are filed in the court. The court does not, is not revenue generating, that is not allowed, we do not consider that. We generate funds, but we have to come and report to council the money we do collect. We're required to collect all of the money that defines the costs and fees that are imposed, and then every month we remit all of that money back to the city. And then we come once a year and we ask the city council to fund us. And so we're funded for the year, we do our business, but we are absolutely not dependent at all on what the police department does. The point the judge was trying to make is that the case filing, that's up to the police, that's not up to us. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Comment on the municipal court 2023 budget? Okay, hearing none. I'll go ahead and close that public hearing, and we'll move on to resolution, and thank you very much, Terry and Judge Leland. Resolution F-092, the UTA land swap application is Todd on Zoom?
Yeah.
Okay. Todd, you there?
Yes, I am, I am here. So let me see if I can get the, get the screen share up here, and I will open up my presentation. Can everybody see that one?
Yeah.
So I just have some brief slides, kind of tell you what this application is about, a little bit of what, what happened in the, in the public hearing that we had with the planning commission. Move right through it, and I'll be happy to answer any questions as we move forward. Recognizing that this is just a application to Spokane County, Spokane County will go through that process sometime, probably around this time next year, as they're kind of behind last year's applications. And then there'll be another public hearing involved with, with the applications as we move forward, and more discussion of that. So we just move right into it. Tonight's proposal is to remove 10 acres out of the UGA, which is south of the side of the tracks of the Cheney, and move 10 acres to the north side of Cheney. The proposed land use designation is like-for-like, it's, it's called Critical Areas Limited Residential, which is four units or an acre, and that's what we're proposing on both sides. When we, we take one out of, from the south, take it up to the north, it's just a like-for-like. It is just a land swap. There won't be any expansion of the UGA. Council action tonight is just to consider resolution. This is not a, this is not a public hearing. A public hearing happened at the planning commission, and again, this resolution is just authorizing some middle of the application for the UGA in the 2023 timeframe. So as you can see, if my pointer will work, the 10 acres down here, under the removal, will be down below. And let me grab my, and then this up here is the addition, this addition of 10 acres is just right north of the Orchard Development. This south portion of the 10 acres is Paradise Road. On November 14th, the planning commission held an open public record hearing where testimony was taken, testimony provided by RCW 367. This is really our public hearing process. Since this was just an application for resolution, we wanted to be transparent, we did a public hearing from the planning commission. The record that we asked him to approve consideration is just support of an application. It's not support of any land use changes or anything like that. This is just an application process. So tonight, no new information is really accepted in the record, but keeping so, it's really not going through that, that UGA process, it's kind of a different process. Again, the county, through their process, when they actually decide whether they will consider that exchange, they will go through more of that, that process of an actual land use designation. And prior to the planning commission, staff member received one call against the project, against the project, and at the planning commission, 14 people spoke on the UGA and were seen to be in favor of the proposal, really not against it, and four were not in favor of the proposal. In your packet, so you do have the minutes of that, as draft minutes, but it did, does capture pretty much what the, what the 14 people spoke about for your consideration, and the planning commission recommended was supportive of the UGA application with a 5-0 vote. Little bit of why we're doing this, it's both in the county comprehensive plan and our own city comprehensive plan, kind of lining out the goals, the policies, maps, and it really is, the city's plan is a roadmap for the city, including compatibility and efficient land use for Cheney's future. And you heard me talk many times, I mean, it looks like our residential, our residential is running out. When I say residential, I'm talking about more or less a single-family housing. Higher years that we look at, we don't have many years where we're still trying to either infill or do something within the city of Cheney to, to kind of capture the demand for our single-family, single-family residents. So really, the land use map, and the very last slide will show you really what is, what do we have down, down below. It's the 2037 Future Land Use Map. We identified roughly 578 acres of land in the urban growth area of that 578 acres, 290 acre zone by the city of Cheney, that's around our wastewater treatment plant. This is really not considered any type of density, it is just open space, majority of it, not a majority of it, but most of it is wetland areas and repairing around the wetlands, and that's what makes up that 290 acres. The remaining 288 acres is designated, the county is rural conservation, rural, traditional, and mineral lands. Much of this is, you know, balanced rock, various wetlands, and intermixed in all of those, those areas. So like I say, the urban growth area right now is within the county, it does have a county designation of its zoning on its own, it is not within the city as we, as we look at it. So why are we doing that? The mid-1990s and early 2000s, most of the growth pattern shifted south of the railroad tracks to facilitate, you know, some large-scale projects. We went ahead and brought in not only around the wastewater treatment plant, our 290, but we also looked at additional land down below. And while the, the, south of the tracks development did provide some infusion into Cheney, it created another, a lot of challenges. So basically, over the last 20, 20-some years, most of our single-family growth has been north, northward bounds, right around the Bets area, as you see the growth happening around there. So we wanted to kind of take a look at what would that look like if we were to start taking where the growth is actually heading. So this is my last slide, and that just shows you really the breakout of the 288 acres in the yellow compared with the 290 acres that the, that the city has. So with that, I will be happy to answer any questions if I can. I have Brett, Brett Lucas is on board too tonight to answer any questions that he may have. If there is no questions, I'll just open it up for discussion.
Thanks, Todd. Any thoughts for sure with Todd, any questions? Your honor, I have, I guess, a few questions and comments to dig into this, I guess. So this is, this has been brought before the Public Works Committee a couple of times since the last time. I'm confident in it making it out of the Public Works Subcommittee. But I do think that Todd mentioned tonight that, you know, this is for an, this resolution's for an application. The county wouldn't act on this resolution for, not until next year this time. So I don't, I don't feel like we have an immediate rush to push this resolution through by any means. But I do want to get into the staff report and a couple of concerns I have regarding this land swap. I'll probably just start off, so I'm in the, I'm in the packet, Todd and Brett, and I'm looking at the narrative, and in the packet it starts on PDF page 103. On page five, there's a, there's a statement that the proposed 10 acres of land to be added to the north side of Cheney does not contain any known critical areas according to county records. I think we definitely want to update that statement, because if you do search T H S on the web, which is a state-endorsed website for fish and wildlife priority habitat, I'd say at least 40% of this, and it's actually 9.6 acres according to the assessors, roughly 40% of that is shrub step habitat, which is priority habitat. So that's, that's the first thing that I want to point out. Moving on to page six. Checkouts here, under.
What kind of habitat did you say?
It's shrub step.
Shrub, okay, thank you. I can't hear.
On page six, under, we talk about the findings under, I guess it's subsection six, so page six, subsection six. The finding, let me, let me read this here. The 10-acre land swap does not address the larger issue of the Cheney UGA. That's, that's a pretty important statement. And then the second statement in this finding says that the current UGA located in the south of the railroad tracks of Cheney is oversized. We need to right-size our UGA. And the reality is, as Todd and Brett pointed out, our UGA currently is about 578 acres. 10 acres, if you do the math, 10 acres divided by 578, that's not even 2%. So that, that doesn't, it doesn't even scratch the surface of addressing our 20-year forecast in our UGA. We need to take a more holistic approach at what the UGA should be. And I do firmly believe that we need to, we as planning, as the planning department, need to figure that out. The next thing I want to bring up is on page seven, under section two. You know, there's part of the finding looks, or makes reference to, you know, it was, it was kind of a mistake to go to the south. I, I don't know that anybody, none of us here were back here in 1990 when I think the planning decision was to go down south. All right, excuse me. And that wasn't, wasn't anybody?
Yeah, I was, I was involved.
Okay, well.
I'm not proud of it, but I was involved.
Fair enough. I didn't, I didn't mention that in single U of, by any means. I guess the point is, you know, it did obviously infuse some development within downtown Cheney. And, and it's, and it's well said that I think some of the UGA right now that we have is, is tough to build on. It's, it's got wetlands, it's got the salt-out crops and, and a large track of open space. So I think the bottom line is, we do need to take a hard look at our UGA. And a targeted spot zone of a 10-acre swap doesn't do our citizens or taxpayers justice. And it's, it's been well documented, if you look at the case law and the other cities across Washington that look at UGA changes. And what they truly focus on is what's called a compact UGA, urban growth area. And the reason they look at a compact zone, and again, if, if, and if the mission is to go north, that's fine, but we do need to look at public infrastructure, everything from water, sewer, utility, fiber, bus routes, et cetera, and, and the roads. And as we know in Cheney, railroads are a detriment, they can be a detriment to development, and obviously first responders just getting out there and fulfilling public safety needs. So the point is, we really have to take a harder look at our UGA, and a 10-acre, a 10-acre swap of this nature, again, in my opinion, doesn't, doesn't do our ratepayers and our taxpayers any justice. My major concern is, Todd, if you don't mind switching back to the map that shows the 10 acres on the north end, it, it does put that 10 acres along a peninsula to the north, that there's not a whole lot more growth opportunities to the north. And other things we've talked about in the Public Works Subcommittee is, if you take West Paradise onto SR 904, you're crossing a railroad-grade crossing that's unmarked. I mean, that's, that's, that's a safety issue. So I don't think it's fair to the community to implement tax increment financing to support one single development that brings in a very small percentage of homes, when we have opportunity across the city and within the city to build those homes. We, I mean, we have at least 80 homes plotted right now, whether it's in Plumerie Platte or Final Platte, Simpson, you know, along Simpson Parkway, I think there's at least 50 right there. So again, my, my position tonight is, let's pump the brakes, we don't have a full council here. I, you know, I know when staff talks about the larger issue, there are other larger issues, and we have property owners that flank the northwest and northeast city limits that may not want to be in the city, including the area between Paradise and, and, well, I guess it'd be Murphy. And again, what, what we don't want to do is create a city limit and urban sprawl where our, again, our utilities are just, they're spread out like spider webs. That's, that's not the intent of a, of a compact UGA. So that's, that may have been long-winded, but that's, that's my position.
Additional comments on this?
I think this also came to general government a couple of times, and I think there were some bigger plans that did not come together regarding, well, let me back up, let me, let me back up to. regarding, uh, well, let me back up, let me, let me back up to the olden days. Um, all, the, the, the stuff to the south that was brought in, there were extensive plans made by the property owner which have never come to fruition. And putting the urban growth area out there at the time, we were anticipating, we were anticipating the property owner would follow through and actually do some of these things. And, and it hasn't happened. And so for the last thirty years, a few things have been developed out there and nothing else has happened. And there's no apparent plans in the near future that we're aware of that are going to happen. And so for all of that property to be tied up into stopping us from other activities, not helping us build our, our community. And so, um, one of the things that this, uh, proposal does for us is that it allows us, as you say, just two percent risk as opposed to saying, yeah, with just a two percent risk, um, using your number, we will be able to go to the county and ask them, can we, can we take this stuff out of the U G A? Uh, can we start cutting away at properties that a person owns, that they're not doing anything with, that they originally wanted us to bring them in? So I guess my position is this is a really important test for us, and we shouldn't wait because it is only two percent. It's not a big, it's not a big risk. For us to go to the county to get them to make a judgment on how we can proceed to continue to chip away at less productive U G A properties as we move them to places that are more appropriate, uh, more developable. As you said, you know, it's, it's a lot of, uh, rock down there. Not a lot of it can be, not all of it can be developed easily. Um, and we know there are other properties around the city where easier development, less costly development could happen. And, um, regarding, you know, this, this, this doesn't address the issues of what a development would be up here. We're not trying to solve that today. Yes, there's a railroad track, but will the, will that be the main route? Will, will you be able to, I mean, there's all sorts of decisions and opportunities that would happen in that process of the actual, um, uh, actual plat when we, when we would get that eventually. There's lots of opportunities for us at that time to deal with those specific issues. But at this point, there's a person who, or there's people who want to develop that property, put forty homes, which is not a small amount of homes or residences, I should say. I don't know if they'll all be homes. But, um, it, and, and we have, you know, in general government, we've also been talking about the, and in the budget session, we've been talking about doing a land use study relative to our comp plan amendment, uh, or, you know, our cycle. And, um, so bigger decisions can be guided by that land use study that the, the staff is proposing. But, um, at this point, it would be good for us to know. And that's basically what's being asked today is to send this to the county to get clarification on, on the swap so that we can know as we move forward, what, how we can do that and what we can do uh, to actually have somebody who wants to develop homes for us. And at this point, it isn't happening south of the track. West of the, east of the track. So anyway.
Yeah, I, I think there are several things that, um, I'm thinking about. One would be, I, I really do like the idea of having a better overall comprehensive plan of where we're moving with our U G A as a city. Um, I do believe that the city is growing north more than it is growing south. So it makes a little bit more sense to try to get some more of the U G A up north and maybe even a little bit west, um, on Washington. But also I wonder what kind of precedence we're setting without a bigger overall comprehensive plan. We're kind of setting a precedence here of, hey, just take a little ten acres, move it up there. Then what do we do a little, little more down the road? Does somebody else want us to take another ten acres and put it somewhere? And we're just kind of piecemealing things here and there with little five to ten acre spots. It doesn't seem like a good overall plan where we're trying to communicate well with citizens and with those that we would like to get in the U G A. So, um, I, I think that poses some issues as well because it's, I think, I think it makes a lot more sense to create some real positive vision with people that we'd like to bring in the U G A. I'm not sure this does that. So I, I guess just hearing about it for the first time, and those are just my, like, thoughts right off the bat, is I, I guess I'd like us to see, have a bigger overall comprehensive plan, which we did talk about a, a month and a half ago at our general planning meeting. And I thought that the plan that was brought there and, and what Todd and Brett were kind of working through, even though it's got a little bit of some snags in it, um, it sounded like a much better plan to try to get larger chunks that could, that could be developed to the west and to the north and northwest, really. Um, so I guess for me, I'm, I'm wondering what the, the bang for the buck is here of just doing a one little ten acre spot. So, um, I, I guess that's just how I feel right in the moment. Thanks, Mayor.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of in agreement. Um, I don't really think that the ten acres is really going to benefit the city as a whole. Listening to, to what Ben's is saying and his point, it makes sense that this is one little tiny piece of the puzzle. And, um, I know a lot of work's gone into it and there's been a lot of meetings, but I would like to see a bigger picture also of being able to expand our, our U G A.
Well, I think, I think everybody's right with this. I agree with this too. I think personally, I think we should approve that and we should put out a comprehensive plan for the rest of the U G A. Um, part of the problem I think we're going to have is we got to get people that want to be in the U G A. Right now, I think that's, uh, having trouble there.
Yeah, so, so, so why reject someone who actually wants to be part of the city?
Individual giving up their ten acres. Correct? Is that right?
And instead, it's, it's only two percent. So how big of a problem could two percent be?
It, well, it, in fact, I'm not trying to take the floor all the time on this, but, um, you, you mentioned a couple of things, and one is risk. And, and again, the risk we're taking by approving this is we're setting a very scary precedent. Anybody around our city limits could petition for a spot zone. And here we go, here's, here's the precedent that we have that, you know, why wouldn't we let them in? And the individual that could broker those deals are, is an individual that has half the U G A in its ownership. That's a bad precedent in my book.
I don't understand the.
Well.
Explain to me a little more.
In order to do a land swap or a horse trade, if I'm going to trade my horse with your horse, we both have to agree.
Well, except that's, that's what the test is, is, is to take this to the county. Um, the property owner of the south is not, it's not a horse trading. It's, it's our U G A, it's his property, but it's our U G A. And if he's not going to do anything in his U G A land, we need to take it and put it somewhere else. So the U G A is ours.
I agree with you a hundred percent. The U G A determination should be ours.
Yes.
And right now, the way it's set up is this is a horse trade between two individuals.
Well, actually, it's a proposal that, then I would, maybe staff needs to help communicate this. Um, my understanding is we are taking this proposal to the county that says we want to take this part of our U G A. We wanted to, we want to reduce this part of our U G A and put the, and place our, some U G A up here. The fact that we asked that property owner to the south where what would work best in his mind was a courtesy of, to some extent. Because we originally had this line drawn slightly different. He wanted it, so we moved it over. So we were being accommodating to his request, but, uh, so staff, is that correct?
That is correct. I mean, uh, uh, you know, our original proposal, we, we were taking a, a huge swath of the U G A and trying to put it up north. Um, and then we just, we just met with, uh, you know, some property owners that do be in the U G. You know, and we. What's that?
You have to pause, the video pause there for a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Am I back online?
Yep, yep, we can hear you.
Okay. Yep, I'm, I'm, my, uh, my connection says I'm unstable, so, well, true fact on that one. Um, so, uh, so really, we, we, we did take a, a, a bitter, bigger chunk out of it. And then we realized, uh, we did have some challenges, not only with Spokane County, but also with the Department of Commerce in trying to, uh, move an application of this size out because we, it's not only about people wanting to, uh, wanting to become into the U G A. And some people don't even want to get the reduction of, of the U G A and move to a different area. I think it was just too big a chunk, uh, too much to discuss. Uh, we learned a lot with that, and, and the only thing that we really came out with um, was a, a better understanding of how this process would work. This is an annual application, my understanding. Uh, this is an annual application for that end, but there is agricultural land to also deal with, uh, whether that would even be considered. Uh, so there is a lot of hurdles that not only, uh, uh, Department of Commerce is working through, um, it's also Spokane County working through in their application process, um, where we need to, uh, you know, just kind of, like you say, I agree, uh, next year is to, to maybe bring in a land quantity analysis, take a look, maybe have more conversation of where, you know, we want to, we want to grow. And, and like I say, this, this application was, was, was pretty much, uh, agreed upon to take it out from the south. And, and when we do have a willing, uh, developer for the addition on the ten acres, uh, so we felt that this was a, uh, uh, could be a, a, a good application, even though it's, it's small in nature, uh, really changed from, um, what we first proposed. Um, but it is something that we, we, um, we felt that we would have an application that, that might merit. Um, the bigger application that we, we proposed uh, would possibly go through a hearing process with all of those concerns, egg land, uh, people not wanting to become into the U G A, people not wanting to be taken out of the U G A, uh, we felt that it wouldn't, it wouldn't, um, probably, um, do well, uh, when Spokane County, uh, through that application process and especially through the public hearing process. So, and that's, that's why, uh, you are seeing more of a slimmed down version of what is, uh, being proposed tonight.
And I'm not, I'm curious why, the other question I had, but I'm not sure who used the phrase spot zone ear- earlier or first, but this is not a spot zone. We're not doing zoning. So I, what, I don't understand why we're, that came up.
Well, I can, I can explain that. I, I probably was the one that used that term. I mean, right now, the nine point six acres that we're referring to on the north, the ten acres is zone rural traditional.
Right.
And if we, it is a zone change. If we, we're.
If we bring it in, of course it would be a zone change. Yeah.
So head to the spot zone. We're picking that spot, that one little spot to bring it in. And, and there's a huge benefit from going from county rural concert, or traditional to basically R one.
So, but, but, uh, adjacent to it is residential property, I mean, a single family housing, correct?
To the south, absolutely, yeah.
So a, a spot zone, uh, if it came into the city, of course we would rezone it. It's, a spot zone is when you take something unusual and set it inside or a, an in, inconsistent or incompatible, uh, yeah, no, this, this is not a spot zone in any way, shape or form.
What you bring up incompatible, I mean, there was at least four people that commented, I was at the planning commission hearing. There was at least four people that lived along Paradise that felt this was incompatible.
But they're not part of our city.
They, they are not, but ideally, I think they, they could be at some point.
Yeah.
With full transparency and, you know, working through a, I think, a land use study that would appropriately size our U G A to be compact and were taken into account utilities.
So there's utilities adjacent because it's already got housing right there, right?
There is, there's definitely water and sewer, yes, but I think there's other concerns there, as I, as I mentioned. Um, and, and those concerns being, again, is it a priority habitat? That's under be determined. Has there been a feasibility study? No, I mean, we made the same mistake moving to the south, thinking that most of that U G A would be developable. And in case, in case it's going downward.
Developable for the things that you originally proposed it to be.
Which I think was a golf course and other, other things, right?
Right.
Fair enough. But, and, and again, I don't have any issue with the, the proposal being forty homes up there. I, I have the reservation given this process. And the process should be more transparent. It should be more inclusive. And it should be more thought out from the perspective of our taxpayers and our ratepayers. I mean, we're talking the last couple of informational items have been rate stays. Rates are going up.
Yeah.
And it's, I, I, I think it's.
This would be more people to help us pay for these things. No?
If, if you look at what you have to do in terms of road improvements, oh, yeah, it.
Aren't those things that the developer will do though?
This, this development wouldn't pay for itself. This, I agree that development should pay for development. This development would not pay for itself. Our taxpayers would be subsidized.
In what way?
Aim for improvements, ability improvements, road improvements.
I don't know, but we know that. That would be something we would have a better perspective on when we get to a flat, right? You could say that about, just about any of these things.
No, not, not necessarily, not necessarily. I, 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 I do think we need to pump the brakes again. There is, there's no reason we need to be pushing this application right now. The application would not even be heard at the county for another year. It just, it just, it, it doesn't make sense to push this right now. I have a question. Todd, is there an application deadline for next year's county review?
For, for next year's, um, yeah, obviously we have an application deadline. Uh, I think it was right around December twentieth would be the application deadline for the, uh, for consideration in twenty twenty-three. And I don't know if Brett can answer that. I would, I would assume that there would be somewhat, uh, uh, of another application in twenty twenty-three uh, around this, this same time.
Uh, that is correct. Applications are taken once a year by the county. So if we do miss.
Say that again, I'm sorry. Could you say that again, Brett?
Yeah, if we, the county takes applications once per year. So if we miss this application deadline here on December twentieth, then we'd have to wait till December twenty, twenty twenty-three for the next application cycle.
Curious to see if we have time to.
Yeah, no, there's a deadline. So there is a, I mean, it's, it's not. So there is a, I mean, it's, it's not like there's nothing pushing us. We can, we can do this in April or something. It's, there's a deadline.
Well, we could do it in April next year, but they would review the application until December 20th or shortly thereafter. And, you know, I hate using this phrase, but the juice, juice isn't worth the squeeze on this one. It just isn't. And I, I really think we owe it to our taxpayers and our ratepayers to take a step back, pump the brakes, and, and look at this. We have larger issues. Why are there large property owners that are basically saying, we want to be out of the UGA? That's a significant problem for our community. The other thing we haven't been talking about is what we have in terms of capacity within our city limits. Paul brought this up last, that last council meeting. We should be looking at properties that we can give incentives to redevelop in the city. And, and once we, once we actually do that calculation, you know, again, I, I'm also fixated on the, the fact that, I don't know that we need a UGA of 578 acres for our 20-year forecast. I think that, I think that is oversized.
Oh, I, I definitely agree with you. I got faith we need all of that at all. But as you said, this is just 2%. All we're dealing with is a 2% change here.
If, if it didn't set a bad precedent, and it didn't, and it didn't push us into a peninsula that has no future development opportunities to the north, and have an at-grade rail crossing with no lights, that is concerning.
Right. And, but there's no, so there's a traffic study being done, right? Who's doing the traffic study?
T O, so I'll fully disclose that. And I know you guys wanted me to disclose that. And I'll disclose that. I'm the environmental services manager with T O Engineers. I have no hand in what Phil White works for T O Engineers as he writes the traffic study.
Right. So when the traffic study is done, why, or, you know, do we even, well, to do the traffic study, there obviously has to be some sense of what roads need to be fixed or can, will, can the traffic study look at not having this development use the road to the east? That instead they could come down and get on best to get on the road, on, on the highway too.
My, my understanding is Phil White's been the traffic planner and retainer. And he's, you know, he's been asking questions about different UGA swamps and reallocations from a level of service model. But again, we've mentioned this now for at least two consecutive public work subcommittees, that there is a concern about that at-grade rail crossing. And again, I, I, I'm not really sure why we're, why, why, why we're pushing this at this time.
Well, one of the other things I think the mayor has been talking with someone about is moving that track over to the, as was been discussed before, when Tom Trulow was here with mayor. He was, had the concept of taking that track from about the rodeo and moving it sort of east. And, and then we wouldn't have this issue. So there's a lot of things going on that may, that may affect that in such a way as that it won't be an issue. But all of these things, I mean, we can plan forever. We can push things, decisions out and lose opportunities, you know?
Would it be, since we do have another council meeting prior to the application deadline, would it be prudent, we are missing two council members? This is not my call, I'm just throwing it out there to continue the discussion at the committee meetings and then bring this back at our next council meeting, that's the 13th. So that gives you a week based on the decision from the council. Is that something you guys are willing to do or? I, I mean, that's, that resonates with me because that's pumping the brakes for a couple weeks.
That resonates with me because it potentially includes more, more people.
I like it there.
[laughing]
So if I could, just offer it up there, I would accept the motion to defer Resolution F-092 to our next council meeting and continue the discussion in the subcommittee.
So not our special meeting?
Uh, the 29th. You said December, would you say, I don't know if that was right, was it December 13th?
Okay, oh, yeah, you can.
So it's December 13th, 13th, yes.
So move.
All second, thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Mark? Okay, thank you. Let's defer that. I'm sorry to just stop that, but I think there's a lot to be discussed on this issue, on this. There has, I think it, I think it'd be prudent to have the rest of the council here. Okay, thank you. Great discussion, by the way. Okay, let's move back up to our public hearings. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing for both the fire and the police 2023 budget presentation. Thank you all for being here.
I thought these kids did an amazing job.
Yeah, I, I'm so impressed.
Thank you.
I asked Mark to get me up and running because I brought my amazing wife tonight. And if I look like an idiot, she's going to let me know about it for the next several days.
Thanks, good.
I even minimized that, or I'll try to minimize it. So the real reason why I brought my wife, thank you, Mark, is to help me celebrate. So this very night, five years ago, you all swore me in as your city fire chief. And, and I also promised her that I'd take her out to dinner. So I think that's the real reason why she came tonight. But thank you for being here to help me celebrate this occasion, honey, and hopefully for another five years. So who are we and what do we do? Somebody was saying simplicity, that we put Band-Aids on boo-boos and water, wet stuff on a red stump. While although that is correct, what I'd like to say is, is that we're highly technical, time-sensitive, and a labor-intensive workforce that responds to all hazards. So we do everything from advanced paramedicine to compliance-based technical rescue incidences. There we go. How do we do that? Well, in its simplicity is that the CFD way is that we focus on the community and we're dedicated to that cause. That's a CFD way. The strategic vision of that is the three, the three ideologies on the left-hand side of that screen. If we have a safe, effective, and efficient workforce that's highly trained and has, has the tools and the abilities to do their job, we can focus on and taking care of the community. There we go. Our simple hierarchy structure, as you all have seen in the past, myself and Elga Montiel is our, is the fire department secretary there. And then we have three separate shifts that work a 24-hour, 48-hour schedule. Down at the bottom, you'll notice that we have our six positions for our part paid employees or our volunteer firefighters. I had Elga run the math for me. The four and a half years that we've had our new volunteer program that we stood up four and a half years ago, that, that's a 12-hour shift model versus a traditional model. We're averaging 22 and a half months per volunteer. Not great. What that means is about once every year, we're cycling one-third of our volunteer firefighters through the fire department. They're quitting, moving on. Some of them are getting hired at, at other fire departments, and some of them just can't handle the workload. The good news is, is that we're slightly above the national average of 18 months. You'll see on the right-hand side there, our E W U Cadet E M T program. Last year, I had a couple numbers in there. Those students have now fallen off and have gone on to pursue their dreams of being nurses and, and other EMS skills. But I got a slide later on that I'd like to introduce you to. So here we are with the numbers. Top left-hand side of your pamphlet or the screen here indicates where we were in 2021. I closed those out for the entire year, which brought in all of November and December. What I have to do for my budget presentation for you all every year is estimate November and December for this presentation for the year that we're currently in. Based on our 3.4% 10-year trend line, lands us at about 1,893 calls for service for 2022. Down at the center of your screen there, where I like to focus on is how much time do we actually spend on scene? And probably more importantly, what is our average response time? Those are two critical benchmarks within the fire department. We've increased our time on scene slightly, and I believe part of that's just due to technology, having, you know, our electronic patient care health records and everything online and electronic to, to be able to quickly get on scene, get the information that we're looking for, treat our patients, and get them transported. The, the second part of that, I believe, is, is now that we're a robust fire department and we're starting to get some of our firefighters off of probation, they're becoming more capable and able to do their job quicker. The average response time pretty much remained the same as last year, which is a good indicator. But you can see at the bottom there, the national response goal should be five minutes and 20 seconds from the time dispatch, dispatches to South to the time we arrive on scene at the emergency. That's, that's a national best practice. You saw I dropped in our Washington Survey and Ratings Bureau. That was a huge accomplishment for 2022. We went from a category five up to a category four. So there should be a significant cost savings, I hope, with all the residents and business owners within the city with their insurance. That became effective this month for November. Our, our split divide between EMS and all other calls, we're 72.4% for our medical call volume. That's slightly higher than the national average of 68%, but it's also slightly lower than what I'm seeing across the West Plains fire departments as a whole. We're having around 79 to 80% across the West Plains, Washington. I believe that, that, that stems from two things, right? We are a bedroom community. We understand that. Medical is what we do a lot here compared to some other jurisdictions, the national average. The other part of that is, is not every fire department puts, puts their data in and submits that to the National Fire Incident Reporting System, or NBRs. It is a requirement, if you put in for a federal grant, that you, you subscribe and put your numbers into NBRs, which we do after every single incident, we submit that. So what I'm saying is, is some fire jurisdictions might take what you would consider, let's say, a lithicist. We probably went to 115 lithicists this year. Well, what does that mean? That means that a citizen calls 911. They're an invalid or they're not capable of being able to move themselves from, say, a sofa to the, to the wheelchair. So they call 911. We come as a, just simply as a response force to help them move them. There's no injury with that, and therefore that gets categorized in the 500 series of the fire code, which bumps it over to the fireside, 27.6%. A lot of fire jurisdictions would probably call that a medical call, even though no medical is rendered for that lithicist, other than simply moving a patient from one place to the next. Some of the demographics by the numbers, 68% or about 680 to 700 of our medical calls were transported. We do an amazing job with making sure we empower our citizens that they have a right under medical law to refuse transport, or what we would consider is that we feel that you should go to the hospital based on what you're seeing because we are not physicians. We don't have all the capability and technology in the field. So 68% is a rather good number compared to, to national statistics for, you know, the amount of EMS calls to those that actually get transported to the emergency department. Some of the other numbers there on the bottom left, you can see that less than 15% are on the age of 18, and 34% are above the age of 65. So the working class makes up 50% there in the middle, which is about average. Any questions? Well, this looks like a very busy slide here. This is the heartbeat of the fire department. Looks a little tacka-carty, carick all over the place. But what that is, is truly to gauge our baseline, where we're at on the average. We're averaging about six emergencies a day here at the Cheney Fire Department. When I started the fire department five years ago, we were right at three, 3.2 calls a day. So we've almost doubled in five years our daily uptick. And we sprinkled in a couple 12, 12 calls per day throughout the year. Each call takes about 30 minutes to respond to and about another 15 to 30 minutes to do the, to the entire report, get back to the fire station, get the equipment back in service, finish out the report. So you're looking at, on average, about an hour per emergency. So six hours, six to eight hours of, of the day is dedicated just towards emergency responses. And then the crew, obviously, they have a robust training program that they have to meet. And then they've got a lot of administrative work that they have to oversee as well. That trend that I was speaking about, the 3.4%, that's over a 10-year statistical analysis. You see the bump that we had in, in 2020 to 2021, and then into 2022. So far, we are sustaining that bump. As we all have alluded to and discussed in the past, some of that is just due to our demographics have changed here in Cheney thanks to COVID. I'm estimating that we're probably going to be slightly higher than last year's numbers of 1,874 calls for service. If you tease that out over the next 10 years, by 2032, we'll be somewhere in the neighborhood of 2,600 calls. Why is that important? It's important because nationally, the benchmark for a single-response fire department or a fire department that has a, a single engine or ambulance that responds out of it, about 2,000 calls is where they start to make that delineation between adding a secondary response unit out of that one single station. So just something for us to have, as a key indicator to focus in on. The five-year average on the right-hand side of that screen, well, September and October, no surprise in a college town, still tends to be the busiest, two busiest months that we have here. Students land here in August, and then by September and October, they're getting a little rowdy. We see an uptick in those sort of calls. Not just the students, though. We also have an uptick in falls, slips and falls within the city because of the weather. That's another trend that we have. The red boxes on the bottom, the bottom part of the right-hand of the screen just indicated our all-time record-breaking month. Since we've been tracking data, about 15, 18 years' worth of data, January through June was very busy for us. We, we broke all-time records for each of those months, and then it just sort of fizzled out. Looking at the three-year trend, I don't have five years' worth of data on this because I teased this data out of our new data software that we bought about three years ago. So I've got three years of good data. But it's still alluding to Wednesday is, is the busiest day of the week, with Tuesday and then Thursday, Monday sort of, sort of bringing it in the middle there. So it's, to me, I'm a little bit surprised by Wednesday being the middle, middle of the day, being our busiest day. But looking at our demographics, especially with it being a bedroom community, I can see where that would be a cause for Wednesday having a spike. With those that want to go to work, they, they try to start the week off generally. They realize that they're not feeling well, something comes up. Usually that hump day is where people start to make the decision that they just don't feel well and they're going to call 911 or go to the emergency room. The busy chart on your right-hand side is our hours of the day. So starting at midnight all the way till 11 o'clock at night, you can see that the standard deviation error is really about from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. So we don't go on a ton of calls early in the morning unless it's a Saturday or a Friday night in a college town, with, with the core of our response is really hidden between noon and 5:00 p.m. So what I know now is, is that between noon and 5:00 p.m. on Wednesday for the month of September and October, I should probably take vacation. Or maybe I should write sides of the staffing at the fire department to make sure we're keeping up with the demand. That's how that data is very helpful for us for staffing purposes. I showed this slide last year. The top left there, it makes up the top 25% of our total call volume within the city limits. What I wanted to do, what I was hopeful to do, is to actually put that on a, a heat map for you all. I just didn't have the wizardry, like Brett does, to be able to. I, I know if I would have sent this to you, Brett, you probably would have cracked it out in 10 minutes. But that becomes important to us as we start to talk about urban sprawl and, and growth development. You know, unlike the police department, you know, we, we live at the fire station. We're not out on patrol in a fire truck like our officers are. A little bit different in, in how we operationally tackle the day-to-day. So as we start to look at where those key areas are within the jurisdiction, we can start to figure out if we've best located to be able to, to spread out from that central location, that fire station, and to be able to touch those areas within our jurisdiction in a responsible time manner. Five minutes and 20 seconds, the national standard. The bottom right, I, I like to keep an eye on this. Nobody, everybody likes mutual aid, but nobody likes moochable aid. So, and I, I want to make sure that we're doing our part as, as a good neighbor to Spokane County Fire District 3, and that we're not mooching off of them. And I'm willing to bet that if I went into each and every one of these reports and I teased out the man hour, we probably contributed the same, if not more, man-hour wise. Because generally, when we go into Spokane County District 3, it's because of a structure fire or a brush fire. So we throw a ton of people with a ton of hours to one of their call, where maybe we just get one of their, of their chief officers coming in to help us with the medical call. So that's my goal for next year, is to be able to tease some of that out just to make sure we're, we're being fair and equitable with District 3. Also put together this slide for you last year. I thought it was very telling, very powerful. I demonstrated 2020 to 2021 data. On, on the hills of COVID-19, the county, if you remember, had a 19% increase average. Cheney serves to 22%. So now what does it look like this year? I figured we would be a lot busier with the students coming back into town, to be honest with you. But really, we're flat-lined. And that was from November 1st of last year to November 1st of this year to get clean data. The average is 3% across the county with the city of Cheney. The average is 3% across the county, with the city of Cheney coming in, right at, right at zero growth on our call volume. So I was a little bit impressed by that. The budget, a lot of thanks to Cindy and Mark for putting this together for me to make sure that, you know, I'm, I'm good at fighting fires, maybe not the best at running a budget, so they they keep me between the lines and make sure that that we're we're doing our part there. But really, the focus item for me is, is that maintenance and operations is part of the budget. You know, everything we do day-to-day comes out of the MNO side of the budget. The salaries and the benefits and the reserves, even the overtime, is all calculated by Cindy and Mark, and I thank you for that. So we got a really healthy reserve budget movement into 2023, which is great. We've got some future considerations. It's going to cost us, cost us some serious chunks of change, and one of which is potentially looking at a new brush truck. That could be $100,000 to $200,000, depending on how many bells and whistles and what inflation's going and the chain, the supply chain is going with with that equipment. More importantly, we're at a point in the next few years that we probably need to make the decision, decision on what we're going to do with our ladder truck. Today, a ladder truck's $1.2 to $1.4 million to replace. It's a controversial topic across all fire departments unless you live in a, in a major city like Spokane or Seattle, where you have to have multis. We do get credit for having a ladder truck. It's a requirement because we have the second most amount of high rises outside the city is Spokane, thanks to Eastern. But it doesn't sound fair that we have to fund a piece of equipment that generally hardly ever gets used. So those are some of the conversations that Mark and I've had, and I know we'll, we'll start to have more into the future about what we're going to do with the ladder truck. Discretionary request items, full transparency, with noting we had to pay back our tax-paying citizens, some over-collected funds, thanks to the county. Also knowing that our brothers and sisters in blue had a much, much more higher priority need, and we've been set pretty healthy for the last couple of years, thanks to you all for the, for the discretionary approvals over the last five, six years. I didn't want to come in swinging for the fences. So really, in reality, we're asking for about $35,000 just to replace a couple of our emergency response tablets and to pad up that one-third of our volunteer board that transitions out every year. We have to send them through training, get them the equipment and gear to make sure they're able to do their job. Worth noting on the bottom there, though, even if you approve that, that $31,500 line item with their salary, our volunteers are only making an average of $10 an hour, which is pretty impressive. So on to something that's near and dear to my heart. You know, when I got to the city of Cheney, we had a lot of students come down from Eastern asking about being an EMT, about going on the EMS. They have a desire, that they want to go into the nursing program or pre-medicine program. When my wife was going through her nursing program, it was, you know, highly recommended by the university that she attended that you should probably go out, get your CPR and see if you can get some experience. So these, these young men and women are, are coming down to the fire station asking for experience. And I thought, yes, you have a desire and we have a need, and our need is to keep up with the EMS demand that that we're seeing across the nation as a whole. So that's my vision, is to create something that's enduring, that's a brand for the Cheney Fire Department partnership with Eastern. So I'm happy to announce that the university has committed to three years of them teaching and incorporating into their program an EMT program. Our battalion chief, Jeff Anderson, will be the primary instructor, but once he teaches these students, at 25 students per class, maybe up to two classes per year, that could give us anywhere from 50 to 150 students over a span of a four-year degree program to be able to come and serve in the communities and to help us take a look at the, the emergency management side of the house with responding to medical calls. A little bit more on that, in case you had some questions. Think of it as two legs. Eastern has their part, we have our part, and at some point, they have to blend together. You can't practice medicine in the state of Washington unless you're affiliated with a department that has a license, i.e. a fire department, an emergency department, or critical care facility, something of that nature. So these students can go get trained all day long, but they can't physically practice medicine unless they're affiliated with an agency. We would love to be that agency for them, but they're willing to take on the lion's share of the lecture part of that. And eventually, after three years, one of their senior lecturers up there, who has been an EMT for quite so many years, is willing to go off and be, get his SCI-certified EMT instructor credential, but it's going to take him three years to do that. So on the front end, we're going to have to supplement that a little bit with allowing Jeff Anderson, who is an SCI-certified EMT instructor, to go teach at the university until they can get certified and trained up. And then once that happens, we'll see a huge return on the benefit there. So Eastern is totally committed and focused at this point to develop this one-of-a-kind, unique opportunity for their students. The other leg of that is, is the EMS response program, and that's where what I call a cadet EMT comes into the fold. And it could be something much bigger than just the city of Cheney. This might be something that we could evolve to where it's a West Plains program, a shared program that we've been talking about, what, how can we do more with less? How can we start to level some things out across the West Plains that makes most sense financially? So those are some of the things that we're going to be looking on, looking at doing in the next couple of years with this cadet EMT program. I know it's got a lot of energy to it, and a lot of students are, are energized about the program. The cost benefit to us, you know, Eastern right now is willing to allow us to put up to six of our volunteer firefighters into the EMT program free of charge. That's $1,500 to $2,000 worth of certification that we would have to pay for if we wanted our volunteers to have that same level, that minimum level that we had all subscribed to as full-time employees. And it helps our volunteers stick around a little bit longer. Any questions with this?
The EMT program winter 2023, so the medical, is that with the medical school? So that is, are they on semesters?
That is semester.
Okay, cool.
So they turned it into a college-accredited program. They're, they're right between 14 and 16 credit hours with a couple stackable certificates for that semester. So they're just concerned with Eastern, rightfully so, that are, are there, are those students going to be, are they taking on too much of a workload or an academic workload? So they're, they're playing with the numbers to see how that works out, but they're fully committed to starting this January, next, you know, in a month and a half. Our training, for me, it's the first thing I said when I got to the department. If we're not training, that's the only way I can validate and promise your spouses, your children, your friends, your family, that at the end of the day, that's my guarantee that you get to go home from a very hazardous occupation, is training. As demonstrated in the past, the fire department is expected to do training above any other profession that I I can think of from, you know, we canvassed our attorney, we canvassed an ER doc, we canvassed the police department, teachers. We're somewhere in the neighborhood of 340 hours required of training with our medical skill per year, per employee. As full-time employees, that's very hard to do. As our volunteers, it's next to impossible. I don't know another department within the jur, within the county that's able to get what's required by WSRV to get the amount of training that's required. But we do the best we can, like most departments, and I'm happy to report that we crushed it a second year in a row, that we got all our training in. Thanks to our online database program called Target Solutions, we could build an annual plan that meets WSRV and WAC requirements, and then we can see how we're doing across the continuum of a year to maintain our credentials with our training. We hosted several academies. We're, we're involved in a lot of things that the county has to offer. We graduated a full-time employee from the Valley Fire Academy. He is currently doing extremely well in the department as our newest employee. We have one that came off probation. We've got one that moved a firefighter, too, and he's working on advanced ladder operations. And we've got, probably the one thing I'm most proud of is that many departments, big departments, it's scalable, you look at succession planning, you look at niches like the fire marshal, you have to have certain credentials to be able to go into those positions. And we don't, we didn't really have anything here for Cheney Fire. So one of the very basic things is fire instructor one, because we all teach at some point, and fire officer one. Many departments have that as a requirement, that if you want to get promoted to the rank of lieutenant, you have to have those credentials first. Both of those are 40-hour class certification, that you got to take a RIT test and a practical examination for. All three of our lieutenants actually got both of those knocked out this year, and they're up to what is the national best practice for lieutenants. Very busy slide, I'm not going to read all this, but what I wanted to portray, you know, we have three different shifts that run three different programs, training, fire prevention, and maintenance. Our prevention program is not just simply a fire marshal going out and doing a building inspection. It's not simply the fire marshal taking a look at prospective blueprints or plans for development. There's a whole leg in the fire service about fire prevention. Matter of fact, the DOD subscribes to it so heavily that our call volumes within a department of defense are so low that they accredited to have a robust fire prevention program. At the end of the day, we should all be out there advocating to prevent fires, prevent these incidences from happening. Some of the things we did extremely well, some of the things we're still struggling with, and I'm okay with that. You could see all the way at the bottom, you know, our fire prevention shift, A shift, was only able to get about 17% of their annually required building fire inspections done. So moving into next year, that's one of my key emphasis items on the, on two slides from now, is that I want to focus on that. It's a requirement. It's a way for us to get into the buildings, take a look at the buildings, curb bad behavior, or maybe just curb unknown behavior to help prevent and alleviate a fire or mishap. Any questions on this slide? Maintenance program, we've done a lot. Last three years, we've been remodeling the fire station like crazy. We have a lot of little intricacies that we need to get, dig into within the station itself of the remodel, so we're going to continue to walk those in and continue to fix the little things that we need to get fixed. But we, we've got a lot of work, we've applied for a couple of grants, federal grants and Washington State grants with the NR, and we have not been successful with those grants, but that doesn't mean that we won't keep trying either. For the first time ever, we contracted out our, our annual fire hose testing. That's a requirement every year for every fire department to test the fire hose, and it was, it was well worth, the juice was well worth the squeeze on that one to have a contractor come in and test all the hose for us. Last but not least, really happy that we funded and introduced a new automatic tracking program for the fire department. We sort of have an Excel spreadsheet, we sort of have a quasi-fair program for this. Our EMS supplies, you know, is in a little bit of disarray with tracking, little things like some of our narcotics and medicines could walk in tomorrow and they could be expired, whereas if I would have known about it two months ago, I could have traded those medications with AMR to keep them, to keep them healthy, and they could have used them at a much quicker rate. So we got this program up and running. It means we've got to crunch a lot of our, our gear and equipment, maintenance things into the program. Another thing I'd like to do is I'd like to come to you all next year, this time next year, and say, hey, we put this much money into that ladder truck, and the ladder truck was out of service this many days out of a 365-day period. I'll, I'll be able to do that now with this program. Finished the station remodel. We have a volunteer firefighter, Joe Mattson. You may or may not know Joe. He's been in this community for an extremely long time. He retired as WSU's Public Safety Director. He has over 20 years as a volunteer firefighter under the Washington State Volunteer Firefighter Retirement Pension. I, I didn't know Joe. He came to me, said that he would like to do more, like to give back. And I said, I would be an idiot not to take your help and your advice. So his bread and butter is, is public safety, public safety and education. So unfortunately, we're not, we're not paying Joe for this, nor is he asking to get paid. He just shows up, I gave him a T-shirt, a pair of pants, and a pair of shoes, and, and he's been out in the community advocating the cause, getting back into the schools, teaching the kids how to stop, drop, and roll, how to change the smoke detectors, the little things like that. So Joe's been a, a huge advocate for the department and a huge asset for us as well. I'd like to expound upon, on Joe and, and potentially even look at Tim Steiner. I know Tim is that he's, he's reached, he's reached the age where he could retire if he wanted to now. Thankfully, he has not made that decision yet, but when Tim does retire, maybe this is a position that someone like Battalion Chief Tim Steiner could move into and to carry that forward for us, so we don't have to have a, a full-time employee do those initiatives. Bring our brush, brush, brush truck fleet back up to two wildland response rigs. We didn't ask the NR that we're surplusing their rigs this year. I have yet to hear back. I'm anxiously awaiting to see if we're going to get one of their surplus rigs, and, and then probably need to start having discussions on how we're going to walk in another, another brush truck for, for the near future. I discussed building a roadmap to help accomplish annual fire inspections. I got a couple ideas, you know, sit down with the prevention shift, shift, and see what we can do. I'd like to level that across all three shifts with the lieutenants, have the lieutenants go out and actually do the, the, what we call company inspections. It gets the firefighter in the building so they know where things are located within the building, they're having a rapport with the building owners, and then, and then allow, frees Tim up to go do the bigger projects and things like that as a fire marshal. And then last but not least, is to realize our cadet EMT EMS program with Eastern. With that, that's the end of the presentation. You have any questions?
Chief, well done, by the way.
Thank you.
Questions for? I guess one really quick question.
Yes.
You were talking about the company inspections, kind of more commercial-based deal, so that industrial and then maybe a little bit more institutional school, the schools as well?
Yeah, each occupancy requires a frequency. Some occupancies, like educational, you're supposed to be touching them twice a year, going two, two, two inspections per year.
So when you showed the slide of the 400, that, that did include schools?
It did, yes.
Industrial?
Yes, the 71 out of 410 occupancies that were, that were supposed to inspect per year on an annual basis.
One really, I guess, quick comment. We, you know, we obviously saw this presentation also as public safety, and, and I think it consensus, we obviously support the discretionary, and great job this year.
Okay, this is the public hearing, so anybody that wishes to comment on the fire department's 2023 budget, this is your opportunity. Anybody online? Who do you want? Karen's not going to beat me up.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Chief, well done. And I'll just keep this public hearing open because we've got police, Chief Petto, and Mark.
I don't know, unless you have a reason for them to stick around.
I'd like to stay and support Chief Petto.
Okay, okay. I know you have the, I appreciate the support.
You're going to run it for me? Okay. Council members, mayor, thank you for giving me the time to talk about this. And Mr. Schuler's going to help me with the budget part, but I'm going to say, my pleasure to talk about the police department itself. Next slide. With that, we're going to start with our mission statement. The mission statement of the Cheney Police Department is to provide accountable, responsive, and professional police services to the members of the community. I've been a member of this community, worked out here for the last, for 13 years, minus about a year despite. And I have a deep appreciation for the members of the community and a deep love and respect for the people that I've worked for and worked with in the last 13 years. Those members of the department consist of, this is an overview of the police department. It's a full-service police and law enforcement organization, provides routine and emergency and investigative services to the public. All those services are provided by the members of the department, which consists of 19 people, 19 people that are paid, and I have two volunteers. I have a volunteer that helps me with the evidence. It was like divine intervention when she showed up at the, at the PV wanting to be a, a evidence custodian. In her previous life, she was an evidence custodian for a police department down in California, and she's a wealth of knowledge in dealing with property and incoming evidence and outgoing evidence and that kind of thing. To fulfill this mission, we have embraced the philosophy of, of That's a philosophy that we're going to continue with, and that's a thing that we're going to start doing in the near future. We in the City of Cheney in the police department adhere to the attitude of no call too small. I could relate story after story of instances where we responded to somebody's house, for example, just not too far from here, like across the street. And then elderly couple, they heard a beeping going on in their house, and we went there and it was their smoke detector that was not even installed. So we put the battery in our smoke detector and climbed up a ladder and installed their smoke detector for them. That's what we mean by no call too small. We're here to help them because when they call us, they are looking for somebody to show up and give them the answer. No call too small. Like I said, our department consists of nineteen right now. That's three point seven fewer than we had last year. The point seven is our SRO position. Dan Gilman retired at the end of last year. So it's made up of me, I'm the interim chief, captain, three sergeant, one of which is a detective sergeant, so it's actually two patrol sergeants. Dispatch manager, which is Thomas Hall, has been there for a long time. He's a huge asset to the department. Dispatch supervisor, which is the lead dispatcher, Kate Fairbanks, and she oversees the scheduling and, and having the dispatchers doing the job on a day-to-day basis. We have nine police officers. Right now, we have nine with one in training. And the one in training is Maria Fell. You may have read about her in the Free Press. She's doing a remarkable job. She should be off training, I think this week, I think this week. Already made a difference. She's been in a high-profile case already and brought it to a successful conclusion. And we have one officer who's on FMLA. He just had a baby, so he's going to be out of, out of pocket for a while. So we currently only have seven, seven patrol officers to fill the shifts. The next one is the org chart. Again, you can kind of see how it's all broken up, and it shows that we have fourteen commissions right now. We're authorized for sixteen, we're down two. We're trying diligently to try to fill those other, those two shifts, those two positions that we're lacking right now. For a long time, we concentrated exclusively on trying to get somebody to come in as a lateral. And what that means is they've already got the academy behind them. If they're able to pass the background and they're able to pass the poly and they don't have any skeletons in their closet, they can come online pretty quickly. They can go in the FTO car, field training car, and within, even with that, within three months or four months, then they're actually out there fielding calls and handling calls by themselves. Those, to find qualified, dedicated, lateral officers to fill those slots is really difficult. And we're in competition with everybody else in the state. The county has a twenty-five thousand dollar signing board if they can get somebody to come and fill those slots. And they're having difficulty filling the slots. I spoke with the person that does their backgrounds now, and a month ago, they had thirty possible applicants. After the first review of their applications, that was whittled down to five before we even get into the questions, before we getting into the polygraph, before we get into psychological examinations. So out of five, they'll be lucky if they have one. So we've been refocusing our, our concentration on our efforts to get new hires. The downside to a new hire, it's going to take a year plus before they're going to be on their own and answer the call. The academy alone is six months long, the field training, five months long, so it takes about a year. But that's a long-term commitment. Traditionally, when we hire somebody that's new, put them through the academy, and they stay, they tend to be loyal, they tend to spend longer. So we're looking at, at filling some, some slots with some new hires. Downside to that is we're going to be down for a period of time, we're going to continue to be down for a period of time. Okay, the next slide is going to be our activity and comparing. I only went back to one year, 2021, 2022. First, the first graph there indicates the total calls for service that we've had, which is typical over the, in years past, prior to 2018, I know we were, we were over thirty thousand calls a year. But now this, in 2021, we're down to twenty-one thousand three hundred eighty-one. And those calls are total calls dispatched and then self-initiated. What that means is when somebody calls in dispatch and asks for a police officer for whatever reason, that generates a call. And sometimes the police officer is out there and they generate a call of their own. So those self-initiated calls. The combination of the two gives us, gives us that high number. These numbers in 2022 to 2021, year-to-date, that's only year-to-date up to the end of October. At the end of the month, I'll be getting November statistics, and then at the end of December, I'll get December statistics. I'm a thousand percent sure that we're going to meet or exceed the 2021 numbers. And the significance of that is that's where three point seven fewer employee. Okay. Our response times, our response times are actually below national average. Has a lot to do with the population, the size of our city. What makes those response times go up is we do have a railroad that runs through the middle of town, splits up north and south. So we'll have delays because of the train. But by and large, our response times are actually extraordinarily good. A priority one type of call, for example, would be like a burglary in progress, assault in progress, domestic violence call in progress. Those are all in-progress calls, or a missing child. If we get a missing child, then everybody drops what they're doing and everybody goes and tries, including at times we call the fire department to come out and search for the child. Priority two calls are not necessarily in progress, but they're still serious. A burglary that happens, sometimes it's not happening right now, car prail that happened, but it's not happening right now. And then priority three calls are twelve cases. Somebody leaves their house, comes back a month later, lo and behold, my house got broken into. And those are usually handled over the phone. Sometimes we can go out there and actually investigate the scene, if it hasn't been contaminated, and perhaps gather some, some evidence. Because our goal is always to try to provide the service that's going to be able to identify if a person's been done wrong. We want to hold somebody accountable for that. And so we want to go out and investigate the scenes. Okay, the next slide is, this is from the Nibers report. The Nibers report is, it used to be called the Uniform Criminal Report, the UCR. This is the new version of the UCR. It's not that new. It's been around for about ten years, but not a lot of the agencies around the country have been utilizing it. We have been doing it ever since I, ever since I've been here. So over the last ten years, we've been using Nibers. And what the Nibers report does is it, we input data that you can query on a national level on the types of calls that we're going to. It also puts in suspect information, whether, whether the, the case was solved. It breaks down part A and part B, and part B being crimes against society more than crimes against individuals. Part A are all crimes against people and property crimes, where there's actually something that we would follow up with. A crime against person would have been assault or a sexual assault or something like that. Crimes against persons, battery, those are all crimes against persons. Then property crimes, obviously, death and stuff like that. There's crimes against society that are also law, and those are like a DUI, where it doesn't involve a crash, a DUI. Almost all the criminal traffic crimes are crimes against society. Or they are class crimes, which are, if, an example of a class crime would be drinking underage, that's a class crime. If you're under twenty-one, that class of people under twenty-one are prohibited from drinking alcohol, that's a, that's a, a class crime. So breaking it down from 2021, you can see that we're almost, with two months left to report, we're almost at the same level as we were in 2021. And if you compare year-to-date from 2021 to 2022, we're actually well above what we were this time last year. So I would expect that we're going to far exceed by the next two months what 2020, 2021 had for 2022. All right. Our felony arrests are up. I've, I've heard it said in here, and I agree with it, that the complexion of the population of Cheney has changed a great deal. And where some of the apartments and some of the housing around here catered toward the university, during the pandemic, those places were left vacant. And now we have people who have moved in here that have nothing to do with the university. And unfortunately, some of those people have malintentioned. As a result of that, our violent crimes are up, our serious crimes are up, and our felonies are up considerably. Most of our calls now involve intervention. What I mean by that is somebody going through a mental crisis or something that has, something to do where we're not going to arrest them, we're just trying to get them the help they need. Or they're serious crimes. And that's what we're facing with right now. As a result of that, our caseload, our carryover caseload has grown dramatically. Our misdemeanors, on the other hand, are actually less than what we had where to go. And that could be also because of the change in complexion of the, of the city. When I used to work out here before, people would always say, oh, those darn college kids, they must keep you busy. The reality is, the college kids would do foolish things. They would get in brawls, they would get, they would have a party, they'd have noise complaints and stuff like that. All the real serious stuff, that, those weren't college kids. Those were people who came out with malintentioned. That's kind of what we're dealing with, with right now. We're having people coming out to the community to have malintentioned.
My, so what you're telling me, or what you're telling us is that literally the addresses of the people committing crimes are more our own people than people coming in?
Oh, coming in from outside, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Where that wasn't always the case.
Right.
When I was here before, there were people coming from the outside.
Right.
For example, the incident that happened in Zips, 2018. A single one of those people was from here.
Right.
So, now that's true, yeah. Now let's talk about how the Cheney Police Department is dealing with complaints and such. We've only had one complaint this year, which matches with last year. I read the complaint, and it was a non-complaint complaint. It was, without getting into details of it, it really truly wasn't a complaint and it was unfounded. So we haven't had any founded complaints. Use of force incidents are up. That has a lot to do with police reform and how we report things now. When we put hands on somebody and put handcuffs on them, that's a support. So as a result of that, we're getting more use of force reporting happening. So it's, it's not that we're doing business more aggressively and therefore we're having more incidents of uses of force. It's that we're in compliance with state law and we're, and we're, we're making note of the uses of force that we actually have. We had two patrol car collisions. I don't know anything about them. I tell you, somebody told me, oh, somebody put a dent in the car. I go, oh my gosh, how did that happen? You know, but I don't know anything about it.
Unfortunately, they didn't get it right now.
No. Yeah. You know more than I do because I don't know what they did, but they had, they put a dent in the car. Haven't had any lawsuits, thank goodness. And employee grievances, they had two last year and none this year. So we're doing okay in that, in that arena. Accomplishments and projects. Okay, the entire police department completed their crisis intervention training, the CTR training, CIT training. That's required, that's required by state. Every, that's how we learn to deal with people in crisis and so forth. So everybody's completed that. They purchased and deployed the body cameras. I've always been a big fan of body cameras. When I first got here, many years ago, I wanted body cameras. And what generally happens when we have those body cameras, it shows that the police officers are doing the right thing. And on occasion, it also shows somebody making a mistake. But by and large, it shows them doing the right thing. And thankfully, we have a really dedicated group of police officers out there that do a great job every single day. The communications audit was completed, and I guess we didn't have any findings. Body warm cameras were purchased, so for accomplishments, they were purchased and they were deployed. Two sergeants were promoted, one a patrol sergeant, one a detective sergeant. And then we had a, the lead dispatcher given the position of lead dispatcher, which is a supervising role within dispatch. We got our mandatory training in. Every single year, we get our mandatory training. And there's a reason why we do that. We have one of the best trainers that I've ever had the honor and privilege to work with. I did forty-two years, now I'm doing a little more. And I can, I can't even tell you how many trainers I have. We have a guy by the name of Chris Owens, who is a sergeant with the, with the PD. Been there for ten years. Nobody is more dedicated, more professional, and tries harder in the training arena than he does. He is by far, without a doubt, the best firearms instructor I have ever had the pleasure to work with, without a doubt. So we've tried to develop a training program that is in-house, saves money. We have people that are experts in the field that they train, and then they, then they provide the training to the officers. And we're going to continue that. We're going to get those people the training that they need so that they can help train us, and we're able to maintain our proficiency through, through that and maintain our twenty-four hours required every year. Order three vehicles last year that are going to be delivered this year. I think that's already on, on books, ready to go. The UCS batteries have all been replaced. They got an evidence drying cabinet, which was hugely important, hugely important. Before I left, we were trying like crazy to get one. We had some really nasty things that I needed dry clothing, and I dried them in the evidence room, put parchment paper down at the bottom, strung wire across there and just hung it up there. This thing is much more technically advanced. We can gather evidence out of it, and it also, it's a little cleaner, it's a little cleaner to deal with. So I'm so, I'm so pleased that we were able to get that. And then every officer has Narcan. Before I left, I thought every officer had Narcan too. And I know that, I know that Zev Campbell has deployed it at least once and brought somebody back from the brink over at Mitchell's, that happened right before I left. So Narcan is, and now fentanyl is becoming such a big problem and other opioid issues are becoming such a big problem and becoming a big problem in the streets of Cheney. We have fentanyl in our evidence room right now. Some person left a whole bag of it at the bus stop the other day. And so we have that stored at our, at our office right this minute. So Narcan is a big thing. Okay. For the budget and the related goals, we're going to continue with the neighborhood policing concept. We've already divvied it up a little bit. We're starting small, going to grow it. We started with the churches and the apartment complexes. Believe it or not, the churches have been targeted for vandalism and theft and a lot of things that you wouldn't even think about ten years ago. It just, it just happened. The churches have become a target. So we've already issued assignments to the officers, and then this next week, or next month, we're going to start breaking up the city and identifying people that we can talk to and be approached to. We're going to add cameras in the city. The cameras are a big asset. I mean, the Centennial Park, for example, still gets tagged and, or the camera has helped at least on one or two occasions to identify potential suspects in that case. So I'd like to see some more cameras deployed in other parks and other portions of the city. They're a big asset, and they can be a deterrent on occasion, so I'm a big advocate for that. Evidence storage locker. Currently, when we have like firearms and other items brought into the PD, we have old gym lockers that we secure them in. They're not very secure. In reality, those locks could be defeated. So we're looking to replace that, the evidence locker, so they can bring in and lock it, similar to what the university had built a few years ago. And they have different cubby holes for different items of evidence that they can drop and then drop the key and then it's secure. And then we're going to talk to Airway Heights PD and see if we can be more included into the current SRO picture. Right now, we're not very much, other than call responsive if they need help, then we go to help them. Eventually, we'd be like to get back into that. I think it's an asset. I think it's an asset for the community and it's an asset for the kids and, and for the police department. So if we can rejoin the SRO program at some point, that would be, that would be a big positive. We need to replace three patrol cars. We already talked about that, that they're getting old. I remember when we picked, I was one of the guys who went over and picked those up and brought them back over here in like 2014, 2013 or something like that. Well, they're starting to, they're starting to wear out. We want to build a strategy to retain officers and replenish staffing levels that we, that we previously had up to sixteen commission and add two more. What that's going to do is going to help, it will never eliminate the overtime picture. And I know the money is a big concern. My, my greatest concern is the health and wellbeing of the officers. There, I have one officer that's done eleven hundred hours overtime this year, and he's got two little kids. We want to build a strategy to retain officers and replenish staffing levels that we previously had up to sixteen commission and add two more. What that's going to do is going to help. It will never eliminate the overtime picture. And I know the money is a big concern. My, my greatest concern is the health and well-being of the officers. There, I have one officer that's done eleven hundred hours overtime this year. And he's got two little kids, he's got a wife and two little kids. I have another one that's got over eight hundred hours overtime. But it speaks to the dedication that they have to come in. If there's a shift to be filled, they'll come and fill it. Thankfully, we have two officer requirements per shift. When I first got here, that wasn't the case. And there were several days where I was the only game in town. Going to, going to special violence halls where people were still dancing in war for time. And that was, it was just me, you know, so it was, it was pretty difficult. So thankfully, we have, we have two officer minimum man, minimum staffing requirement, except for the weekends when we have three. It's a safety require, it's a safety issue and everything else. So if we can get up to eighteen commission, that would be a big, that would be a big benefit to the department. We need to bolster the detective's office. Right now, I have one detective and he has, his caseload is beyond impossible. When, when Officer Brannington comes back off of that M L A, he's going to go into the detective's office right now. And that will give us two. We had two detectives and sergeant, we could really make a difference in how rapid these cases file. And that's our goal. We want to, we want to bring that up to a point where, where these cases can be filed and people can be held accountable. We need to replace the communications officers that we've lost. We just lost one. Her last day is Friday. She was here for a brief time, made her, got off of training and then she's leaving. She did a great job while she was here, but she's leaving. So we need to be able to recruit and retain communications personnel. Communications officers are oftentimes overlooked as members of our department. People, the guys in uniform, they're the ones that are easily seen. Behind the scenes are sometimes the most important people that are on the department. And it's a, it's a double tough job, it's a double tough job. I, I would, anybody that had the opportunity to listen to the radio traffic when we had the incident down at Mitchell's a few years ago. Ben James was the catcher on that and he did a phenomenal job. One guy handling all of that traffic. Difficult job, hard to get people to want to come and do it. And once we have people, we really want to keep them. We are able to complete our emergency vehicle operation training. What we do in the department is we split it up. So one team goes one year, then the other team goes the next year. So we're able to get our E V O responsibilities taken care of. Complete the EMS and police efficiency evaluation. I think, I think Mr. Schuler and the mayor probably have that in the works and there's vendors that are being discussed. And then we want to partner with Airway Heights PD, participated in the SRO program. But I also want to go there and talk to Chief Richmond about other things as well. You and I have been friends for a very, very long time, so I think we can do some. Okay, the challenge of recruiting retention. I mean, that's the biggest thing. Personnel and money, those are the biggest things that we have to overcome in the department. How to address the increasing, increasingly dangerous violent criminal elements? I don't know, I don't know. What do you do to stay that office? We're call responsive. We don't have the resources to be proactive, so we're call responsive. At some point, maybe we can recruit help from the violent crime task force. We have that kind of element that we can do. But there's, there's things that we can do. But the reality is our calls for service in our city has changed here, practically in the last ten years. And we have to do something to try to turn, turn the tide. Number of complicated cases, I'm talking extremely complicated cases. For example, Detective Hanny, I was here for two days and we got three very ugly cases. I was here for three days and got three very ugly cases. And one of those ugly cases, he spent one whole day engaged in the forensic interview. For those of you who don't know what a forensic interview is, it's a very sensitive interview of a crime victim that's done by specially trained people. Rocky sat through that, that interview and he has to come back to the office and sit down and dedicate his time to write that report. So he's essentially out of pocket for two days, he's working on that case. Got fifty-three of those. So that my goal is to get some help to help resolve those complicated cases. Vehicle maintenance. I think that's going to be resolved itself. I think we're getting, we're getting newer cars in. The maintenance picture, some of the older cars are going to fade away. We're not getting rid of them. We're going to use them as spare cars, we're going to keep them around because when cars need to be worked on, they also, we need, the officer's still out there driving around. So we're, we're going to keep those cars intact and use them sparingly. But the maintenance picture of vehicles should be, should be slowing down. Same with that. Oh, already talked about the caseload with the detective, the challenge. Increased service demand, increased service demand. Not only does increase calls for service, the complexity of the call is also, is also a challenge. And the way that we handle those call challenges. For example, we had an incident here just last week where an individual going through a mental crisis was standing out on the railroad track. And there for an hour, two hours. And we waited for mental health professionals to come in from Spokane, Spokane County has where they call George Unit. And that's a police officer connected at the hip with a mental health professional. And with their help, they were able to resolve it. The guy never did get off the tracks, we had to go get him off the tracks. That generated level of support. Maybe it grew. We just helped him get off the gurney and then go down to the hospital, so. But those are the types of things that we're dealing with right now. Increased demands on staffing shortfalls, public safety reforms. We're working with it because we have the choice. There, it makes an impact on how we do things. It stretches out time, the time we're on call. I mean, there's a lot of challenges associated. But we're doing our best to work within the guidelines the legislature put forth. Overtime and overtime usage. Like I said, the overtime is never going to go away. All we can do is try to manage it the best we can, what we have to work with. Demand minimum staffing requirements. When somebody's off, that means we're going to have to backfill shifts. Whether they're off, sick, F M L A, because they just have a baby, or whatever, we have to backfill those shifts. That ladies and gentlemen, the end of my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Thanks, Chief.
Any questions for Mr. Beckel? Anybody have any questions about PD's budget?
Oh, yeah, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open it up for public comment. Karen, did you say, did you have your hand raised? Go ahead, Karen.
Okay, thank you so much, sorry. Chief, I, I know you're new in this position, so a lot of this just isn't, it's, it's directed at you just because you are, you're, you're our new chief of police. So please don't take this personally. Just a couple of things in your presentation that I wanted to address is that in your staff presentation, it says, you talked about having, getting up to, one of the goals for 2023 was getting up to eighteen staff for the department. Where in the written budget that was presented, it's a total of twenty-four. Is, is there a reason for that discrepancy?
Yeah, when I talked about eighteen, I, when I talked about eighteen, I was talking about commission. The twenty-four would include dispatches. So the additional folks would be in this.
Okay, and then just continuing on that, with that plan of those two thousand twenty-three goals of retaining police officers and getting staffing levels to where it should be and what the budget is, is that going to be reflected in any way of the additional money that's being spent from the city? And I don't know if this is coming out of another budget, but the additional money that's been spent in specifically stating Officer Eastep's administrative leave that he's been on and the hundred and seventeen, a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars that's been spent in a matter of fifteen months over past from June of 2021 to September of 2022. Just wondering where that all fits in the budget and if that has been a part of the reason why we've been short-staffed and if there's a plan on going forward with that and making sure that that's going to be taken care of so that we're not dealing with that anymore and losing money out of our police budget.
Yeah, Karen, I'm going to let Mr. Schuler talk, address that because like I said, I'm kind of new at this one.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we're, we're actually resolved, trying to work to resolve that matter. But that has not had any impact on, you know, our, our staffing shortage. Our staffing shortage is really due to people leaving the organization and the inability to, to bring new people in. During my presentation on the fiscal side of things, I'm going to talk about some things that we're going to attempt to do to retain our current officers as well as attract new officers to our, our new labor contract and things.
Okay, thank you. That answers my, my next question on, on that, what are we going to do to retain those police officers? I'm kind of really making sure that they, they feel, they feel welcome in our city, they feel appreciated and making sure that we're rewarding them for their hard work. And really also just thinking about knowing that we've got that challenge of dangerous and violent elements that are adding into our city. Really looking at that retention of staff so that our detectives can do their work and, and possibly even adding up, adding, maybe looking at the budget and adding in another detective if we're unable to get another officer on board. So just kind of playing around with numbers and seeing what our options are so that we can reduce the caseload on our detectives.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else come in? Okay.
I don't have any questions. I would just like to say that I enjoyed these old photos.
Mr. Mayor?
I want to go ahead and, yes, go ahead, Mark.
Hello, I guess first of all, I'd like to say, Mr. Beckel, thank you so much for saying yes to the mayor asking you to be our interim chief. That's great and I love your new vision and I really appreciate what you're doing at the department. And so I just want to say thank you for that. Thank you for what you're doing so far. I'd also like to mention, a couple, couple meetings ago, council member Overhauser mentioned Maslow's hierarchy of needs. And one of those needs is physiological needs, which the city performs, which is giving people heat and light and water and shelter. But the next one is safety needs. And as a city, I think it's part of our responsibility as well to provide those basic safety needs. And what you're telling us as a chief is we need to bump that up to eighteen officers. And so I think that that's something that we do as a city. It's something we perform as city council members and as staff. And the rest of the, the needs that are on Maslow's hierarchy of needs are not things that we can necessarily provide as a city council. But those two are, physiological needs and safety needs. And so those need to be some of our major priorities in budgets. And so I think that staffing needs to be put up to that level so that we are providing that for our community. And I'm excited to see what you're doing, Rick. Thanks so much for stepping up to this leadership level. And we really appreciate it and look forward to working with you as long as we can.
Mark? Anything else? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing for fire, municipal court and police twenty-three budgets.
I, I got to do the fiscal side of it.
Oh, sorry, I'm going to reopen that.
Sorry.
No, no.
He, he got the good, he got the good part, the exciting part, the, you know, I, I get the numbers part. But I'll try to make this as, as quick as possible on the interest time, but it's, it's all important. To be able to provide them the opportunity to, to, you know, address their mission, complete their mission, they need funding to do it. And what I'm bringing you to you tonight is police budget to provide them the tools to do their jobs. And not just the tools, but the people as well. So we'll start with the big picture. This is the total police department budget. You can see it's very people-specific. A lot of, a lot of the funding for the department goes towards wages and benefits. You know, obviously quite a bit of supplies and services and charges and things. But at the end of the day, police is a very labor-intensive department within the city. It takes people to keep us safe. So we're going to break this down. We're going to talk about some of the individual sort of pieces of the police department budget. So let's start with police administration. This is a pretty simple one. This is on the wages and benefits side, this is the wages and benefits for the police chief. On the supply side of things and servicing charges more specifically, this is where we pay for the police portion of our WCIA, you know, fee. This is where they pay their portion of Central Square, which I'm sure you all, after hearing Cindy talk for years and years about Central Square and its other name, that's our, you know, management system. And then the other big chunk of this is the I T charges and fiber use fees. So that makes up a, a good chunk of the servicing charges. Other things in here, there's some communicated, communication-related fees such as, you know, the alarm data line. There's travel in here for the chief to attend meetings and conferences and things like that. This is where we pay for some of the recruitment, you know, fees and things that we, we, or expenses that we, we we have as, as we try to bring in new officers. This is polygraph, the site, the public safety testing fees. And then, you know, just any advertising we do, you know, to try to bring in new candidates. Okay, this is the meat of the, the police budget, the patrol budget. Again, very, very labor sort of intensive. If you add these two together, the wages and benefits, that's eighty-eight and a half percent of, of the budget for patrol. Rest of it, just to give you a little, little peek into the weeds, supplies-wise, majority of that number, that sixty thousand is, is fuel. Get about forty-two thousand. There's some small tools, equipment like flashlights, you know, printers, computers, other office supplies, technology-related things like CDs and DVDs that they use for, you know, recording purposes, because general office supplies, that's, that's a very small number. On the services charges inside the thing, a lot of communication-related expenses here. Things like the Verizon bill and things that keeps all of our mobile data computers in the cars connected, which are lifeline for the officers as they communicate with dispatch on getting the information about interactions of people they have in the community. Travel, one of the things that Rick talked about was training. We have got to commit to continuing to, to train our folks. And from a risk management perspective, it's important if we have, say, an officer involved shooting or, you know, another incident that, that somebody was injured, we have to be able to defend, you know, the training that we provided to, to our employees. And, and Chief's right, we've got some of the best trainers around. Chris Oaks, which by the way, is the last officer that actually went through the Criminal Justice Training Committee as a newbie, you know, and got his certification and came on. So when you talk about commitment, you know, of those folks that, you know, we bring them in here and build them up, there's something real to that. I mean, I got to tell you, Chris Oaks is sort of a godsend to us. He, he does so many things for that department and goes way above and beyond what would be expected of an officer. A lot of repairs and maintenance come out of this as well. This is obviously for fleet, any repairs to computers, you know, in the cars, you know, equipment, all those things. Tires, the vehicle supplies, things like tires, decals for the new cars, you know, just all, all the stuff that they need to do to perform their, their duty. Police station, not a big chunk of the budget, but I did want to just touch on it for a minute. The station, you might ask, why would a station have wages and benefits tied to it? That's actually their portion of our custodian. If you remember last year, we went away from a custodial contract that we had and went to a city employee as, as our custodial. And that was maybe one of the best decisions we've made over the last couple of years. Uh, Dina Miller is our, our custodian, and she has done a phenomenal job across the city. I've not heard one complaint, um, you know, about the service she provides. So that's the police's portion of, of her wages and benefits. Uh, they've got, uh, just, it's sort of the supplies and things, just things like cleaning supplies, obviously light bulbs, uh, things for the landscape around the building. Uh, one of the, one of the bigger charges is just fuel, the generator. They do have a generator in the police department in the event of a, you know, storm or emergency and we lose power. We gotta keep the lights on, you know, at the police station for them to continue to do their work. Uh, utility charges, uh, obviously that's the twelve thousand dollars, not a lot of money, but that's between the, you know, city utilities and, and the invested gas bill. Uh, repairs and maintenance, uh, fourteen thousand dollars. Uh, one of the things that's in there is the DIPCO contract and, and actually the next council meeting, I'll be bringing the two thousand twenty-three DIPCO contract back. But DIPCO does an excellent job in all of our city buildings, but, uh, four thousand dollars there for, uh, for the the contract for the, to keep the police, uh, station, uh, sort of heated and cooled appropriately. Uh, generator maintenance, we have generator maintenance, about three thousand dollars just to keep, keep the generator going, make sure, uh, it's there when we need it. Uh, snow removal for two thousand, that's something that, that after this contract ends with, with the contractors we have in place now, we may look to bring that back in house. And, and talking to Todd, we think we have, you know, our personnel that does the streets, if, if it quits, you know, swipe through the, the parking lot, and I, I think we'd do a lot cheaper than two thousand dollars. Uh, little, little money spent on pest control, uh, firepower, the annual alarm testing, uh, that's about fifteen hundred. Uh, then we do have a little extra money for miscellaneous, for, you know, things that, that might, might be needed, uh, within the building. Firing range, uh, as Chief mentioned, uh, you know, we do have, uh, firearms instructor. The officers are required to qualify every year on the use of all the different types of, of weapons they use, uh, both lethal and non-lethal. Um, want to make that very clear. The, uh, firing range itself, uh, this is where a lot of the ammunition, uh, about seventeen thousand dollars worth of ammunition for them to do all their training and qualifying. Uh, other miscellaneous expenses like targets, uh, target stands, uh, taser cartridges as they do, you know, their taser training, less lethal supplies like the beanbag, uh, you know, for the beanbags, the beanbag shotguns, um, you know, just those are the sort of things that are wrapped up in the firing range. Dispatch, uh, again, uh, very, very personnel-heavy. Uh, if you look at, uh, the total dispatch budget, about ninety-two percent of that is, uh, for personnel, uh, and that, that's, that's a big chunk. Uh, they have some supplies, mainly around their use of technology, computer repairs, uh, camera repairs, uh, just some office supplies like printers and, and printer ink and those sorts of things. Services and charges, uh, just a few little minimal expenses here on, uh, employee background and polygraphs, uh, for dispatchers. They, they go through the same tests as, as police officers, uh, some communication expenses like our access user fees. Uh, travel, again, just to send folks to meetings and trainings, um, and then they've got their portion of the DTA, uh, insurance, that's about eleven-five. Police equipment reserve, uh, this is just an informational slide more than anything else. We do have a police equipment reserve that's there in the event that we need something. Uh, we don't have anything really planned for us this year, but it's kind of a little bit of a rainy daytime, to be quite honest. If, if an emergency presents itself or we need to replace, replace a piece of equipment, um, we have this, this fund to dip into. Criminal justice fund. Uh, criminal justice fund is, is, is an important piece, um, to not only, uh, police but also to court. Uh, this, what you see up here is just the police's portion of the, of the criminal justice fund. Court uses it for things like, uh, the court security and paying for part of probation operation. On the police side of things, uh, as Terry had mentioned, we, we did put a little overtime in there in the event, uh, we do have to do court transport. That's at the last resort. We've been very, very good about being able to do these things virtually, which saves a, a lot of expense, uh, you know, and just in terms of the impact on the police, uh, department themselves. Uh, we've used this, uh, for a lot of, for police uniforms, uh, and supplies in the past. A lot of their equipment, like the ballistic vests and things. Much like the fire department turnout, these vests have the shelf life. We have to replace them. Do you know how long those typically is? About five years? So we're constantly trying to replace those and not all in one big chunk, trying to spread them out over, over years. Uh, the one thing that, that was brought to council this year, uh, that we started this year was the replacement of the mobile data computers. Uh, as they started to fail, uh, we committed to buying a chunk of them in two thousand twenty-two. We're gonna spend fifty-four thousand dollars in two thousand twenty-three to finish out, uh, the replacements. And French stagger those again, so we don't get hit, uh, with a big cost all at once. Um, the, uh, two new vehicles that, that Rick had mentioned in his, uh, presentation, uh, if council approves those discretionary requests, we're gonna use criminal justice fund to pay for those. That's something we've done, you know, in previous years to buy, buy vehicles for the police department. CTED funds. So CTED funds fund police programs. And so in the past, we, we've, uh, sort of funded our, our chaplain program. Uh, this year in particular, we're looking at using the, uh, the CTED funds to play, pay for our body cam. Um, and as Rick said, those things are a great addition to the police department, uh, because they really do tell the story. Um, and they show, at least in my mind, and I think in Chief's mind too, they show that our, our folks, our officers do things the right way. And, and, uh, there's no more of that sort of he said, he said, she said kind of stuff. Uh, this could also pay for things like emphasis patrol. We, we use it for that in the past. Um, we paid for badges, uh, we paid for some VIP expenses out of the CTED funds as well. And then finally, uh, the police department discretionary request, uh, and we'll talk about these in more detail, obviously, at our, our workshop on the twenty-ninth. But, um, these are the ones that, uh, Mayor and I, uh, have recommended, uh, for council approval, um, as we, we approved the two thousand twenty-three budget. Uh, the two additional patrol officers are probably priority one on the list, uh, for the reasons that, that Rick talked about earlier. Uh, the two replacement patrol vehicles, uh, we will end up probably surplusing a, a couple of the older cars, the, the VIP car, which is an old Capri that's is definitely at, at a end of life. Um, so we'll, we'll replace the oldest and, and cars in worse shape than the department. Uh, video hard drive expansion, uh, this is, we just need more capacity to store footage from the cameras in town. Um, and so, you know, as Chief said, we, we're looking at, you know, potential additional cameras, so we're gonna need, uh, this extra hard drive, uh, to store all that footage. Because there are, uh, requirements on the amount of time you have to keep this footage around. Most of it's about ninety days. Uh, the ballistic shields, um, we're looking at two ballistic shields. Uh, these are, you know, a, a, a good resource for the officers in the event of, of emergencies. And we're talking, you know, uh, school shootings, you know, riots, you know, they, it offers a, a level of protection for, for the officers that are responding to those types of events. Uh, firearms replacement, um, guns do wear out over time, uh, much like everything else. And so, you know, we're looking to, uh, replace some of the older firearms in the department. Uh, the forcible halogen bars, so as you've probably heard before, you know, sometimes the police are the first on scene, you know, of an emergency. And this might be a medical emergency. And, you know, these, these are tools that are actually more common in the fire department, but they use these things to breach doors and things. And so we want to make sure they have the, the equipment on hand to address any sort of emergency situation a, as quickly as possible. The digital fingerprinting equipment, this is replacing some old antiquated, uh, fingerprinting system. Uh, there's some efficiencies built into this thing. Uh, it, it sort of takes away the, um, I'll say the ability to do sort of misprint or illegible prints that can't be run. Uh, it can, the, the system itself is very easy to operate and, um, you know, just from hearing the officers talk, this will be a huge addition to, to the department. And then the final one you see down there, which you didn't see in your, uh, you know, budget book, is a drone. And as we've talked about this, uh, and, and, and when I say we, it's, it's really me talking to the officers, um, drones are, uh, a great tool for them as, you know, they do a number of different things. One is, is sort of accident scene, um, you know, they have to go out and do those measurements, you know, uh, sort of memorialize the scene, and drones can get up and take all these measurements, all these things very, very quickly, which gets the officers, you know, back in service that much quicker rather than, you know, spending a whole lot of time out there. In the past, we've been able to re, uh, use the Spokane Sheriff's Department. Uh, they have a drone. They've come out and helped us with that fatality on First Street. They were able to come out, but when they were out here for that event, they said due to their own staffing issues, they probably won't be able to provide that service to us anymore. So, uh, we're looking to, you know, purchase this drone, uh, that price includes getting, uh, operators trained on how to use the drone. Um, you know, it, it'd be a nice tool, you know, for our folks to be able to, you know, to do their thing. So that's it. I know I went through that fast, but I know you're all weary from being here for hours on end. But, uh, we really, we really do need to make a commitment, you know, to the police department. And, you know, I, I said I would mention this earlier, but, you know, we're in labor negotiations with, with the police department or the police officers, police guilds. And I have worked very closely and, and we've collaborated a lot on, you know, what's it gonna take to retain people? And, you know, from their standpoint, they're just, they want to be competitive. And, you know, I'll present to you the numbers, you know, once we get to a tentative deal, which we're getting closer and closer to all the time. But, you know, we want to be comparable, uh, especially to the other municipalities on the West Plain and the other entities on the West Plain. Um, as it stands right now, eastern officers can make significantly more money than our folks, which is crazy to me. Um, but, you know, they got tired of the revolving door, sort of being a trading ground. They were losing officers all the time, so they made the commitment to try to, you know, retain their people. And we need to do the same thing. Um, there's some things we can do with, with base wages. There's things we can do with specialty pay and some retention things. You know, I have full confidence that, that officers that are here now don't want to leave. They want to stay here. They love working in this community. And if we can get the compensation right and, and sort of benefits and things right, um, you know, I, I'm in full belief that we're gonna be able to retain folks and be able to be a little bit more competitive, um, you know, uh, in, uh, attracting new officers. So that, that's a priority for me, is to get this, uh, tentative agreement, uh, done with them and then put in front of you. It, it's gonna take some budget, no doubt. There's no doubt about that, but i- it's at a time that I, I think we can't afford not to, to grab this. So, uh, that's my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mark? In our workshop, we'll, we'll have an opportunity to, to go through the whole budget. But this is an open public hearing, so if anybody wishes to comment on the police department twenty twenty-three budget, now's your opportunity. Karen, do you have anything else to say?
Okay, thank you. Um, yes, I'm here. Okay, so Mark, um, so you're saying that in the budget that you, there's three hundred thousand for two additional officers. Now, in, when I look at the two thousand two budget, that's, we're at, and we're currently at nine officers, but we budgeted eleven. And then I noticed in the two thousand twenty-three, um, suggested budget, it says up to, um, I believe it says, oh, to have thirteen officers. So wouldn't that number go up or what, what am I missing on that?
Oh, okay. So what, the position summary may not have been updated. Uh, you know, when the budgets were first, uh, presented, um, you know, some former personnel did that. And so, uh, you know, we're, we're actually kind of picking up the pieces and, and reformatting a lot of things. And so in working with Chief Bechtel, you know, the numbers that we're talking about today, you know, are the numbers that we're trying to proceed forward with.
Okay, so we're still going to be sitting at nine or at a, looking at a goal, an end goal of two thousand three, having eleven officers versus thirteen?
What, what do you mean, two thousand three? You mean twenty-three?
Two thousand twenty-three, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, I, I was confused there.
Um, I don't know the number of, of certified that will be. I believe that, uh, um, initial, uh, request from police to put their regular, what they have right now, and then maybe unsealed, so we're unsealed. And then there's a recommendation for two more officers.
Yeah.
So what that number equates to, I don't know.
Yeah, so, so what, what the FTE count was, was sixteen. You know, we're down because we've lost some officers. What we're requesting with these two additional officers through the discretionary, uh, process is to bring us up to eighteen.
To add two more positions.
Yeah, to add two new, brand-new positions. These are replacements. These are brand-new positions.
Okay, so that would end up, so that we would have potentially four openings for police officers to add to our staff.
Correct.
Okay, thank you for clearing that up.
Anybody else? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close with public hearing. Thank you all very much. Um, we can move on to ordinances. Cindy? Got the first couple, don't you? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm getting a little punch drunk here. Sorry, uh, resolution F zero nine eight, the water department vehicle purchase. Todd?
Yeah, certainly. This has been, uh, quite a challenge to even obtain any, any vehicles. Uh, last Tuesday, we had a report that there was three vehicles that would, would interest us. Um, three F one, three F three fifty trucks with the body on them. We, we typically will order a chassis and a body, but this, these particular trucks are, are fully serviceable and ready to roll. By the time we got out to, um, out to the, the, uh, place to look at them, um, they were all gone. And, and so they were, were kind of taken up by the county. And then just a few days ago, um, or last Thursday, we got word that there was one that we could, uh, basically that got dropped out. Uh, so we, we kind of, uh, worked, uh, the price out and, uh, I kind of sent a letter of, 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 basically a non-binding letter of intent that if, if this moves forward, we'd be able to snag that truck. Um, this morning, uh, we just received that they have another one coming in. I'm not too sure the availability. Um, so, uh, tonight, we, I, I asked that we, um, have a, a resolution waiving the competitive bid just because on market conditions, they're not available. Um, so we have one, uh, possibly for sure. And I'm, I'm actually, uh, requesting maybe to consider a second one if this one becomes available um, for the same price. These are twenty twenty-two trucks, uh, with the bodies. Um, today, Sourcewell, which is one of our government purchasing, uh, just put online the twenty twenty-three, uh, F three fifties, what we're looking at. At seventy, uh, seventy-one thousand, almost seventy-two thousand, and, uh, with a body, and we're trying to, uh, price out bodies. We have some bodies that, uh, we, we priced out in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, and they were right around twenty thousand, so we're.
Oh, we lost you.
The way we're, we're kind of pricing this out.
Do you want him to repeat that?
Did I freeze up again? I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're, you're unstable.
I'm, yeah, no, I know that one. So I'm gonna make this. So actually, i- in a nutshell, we have one that we, we locked in, a potentially a second one for the same price. Uh, next year's, uh, if we were to order the same truck and only a two thousand twenty-three model, uh, that would be, um, about ten to fifteen thousand dollars higher, we're estimating, uh, just because of the jump of, of prices that, with it's heading in.
Next one.
No, no, yeah.
Questions for Todd? Waiving the competitive bid cycle. This was a budget purchase, correct, for this truck? Are there, are there any other questions? We see Mark post to my two. Is he still on? Mark, are you still on?
Yes, I'm still on.
Okay, do you have any questions for Todd?
Uh, just one quick, Todd, you, so you're proposing to buy two trucks instead of one?
That's, uh, you know, given the information that just showed up, uh, this morning, that there is a potential other one. Um, if we could, if we could obtain that, that would, um, you know, that would help. Um, I think that'd be savings. If we don't, uh, we could get on Sourcewell's list, but it's gonna cost, you know, the body's price was back in two thousand seventeen.
Yeah.
Truck. It's gonna be substantial higher. Um, like I say, we did budget for two, uh, trucks, but we've been struggling even to try to find. Like I say, we did budget for two trucks, but we've been struggling even to try to find two trucks, and there is really no guarantee that we're going to get a second truck, but this potential just came up this morning.
Sounds great. Well, I hope we get it. Thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
So would Resolution F 098 be for purchase of two trucks up to, what, $180,000? Give them some cushion? Do you guys flush that out in finance?
Um, no, it's, they're about $70,000 a piece.
A lot of money a piece, I think.
Well, they're, they're maybe more than that with tax.
Oh, right, sure.
So we'd be, we'd be selecting for that, but I think $150,000 for this year, so it's likely to be over that, by about $30,000, I think, by the time I'll, you know, buy, buy purchase of those of them.
$80,000 a piece.
But they are replacing, these are smaller vehicles, they're not one tons, which is what we used to buy, which can be more expensive, so.
Just a quick question, do we have to modify how F 098 is called out on the sheet? I guess is the question. I guess I'd have to look through it to find it. Oh, because it's just that purchase a vehicle versus...
And the amount up to...
Yeah.
They have to admit that for us to end up to probably a dollar amount, that would be both of them, the stock's been taking the key with the, I'll have, I think, the PO agreement that we send back to the company, we have to obtain that for the second one. But I think if you just submit, of the two vehicles, perhaps just a dollar amount, we can send that, but I'll have the mayor sign that.
I guess if there's no further questions, I'd make a motion that we amend Resolution F 098 to include purchase of up to two vehicles for a total price of $180,000, which gives a little bit of cushion in negotiation. Thank you, a motion of the second to approve Resolution F 098 amended to include the authorization to purchase up to two vehicles, up to a dollar amount of $180,000. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, Resolution F 098 passes. Moving on to ordinance, we've got two for our property tax levies, one's Y 33 and the other one's Y 34, and this is for the third and potentially final.
That's correct, that's the correct mayor, so Y 33 is for our regular property tax levy, which includes our levy lift, and Y 34 is for our EMS levy. We had our public hearing on those, we talked about those. I did get some information recently from the county that added, that talked a little bit about the refunds, I usually get that about this time of the year, so I've addressed that as well. The ordinances themselves don't change though, because you look at last year's levy, and then you go up to 1%, plus new construction, and then for the EMS, and then the 1% for the general, and the 6% for the levy lift. So I actually ran these by, I'm in the county, just to make sure that this was doing what we wanted it to do, because I think we're, want to make sure that everything's good that way, and he did get back to me and said that these were, these were accurate, so this is accomplishing what we're wanting to accomplish. So I would need the third and final reading, a final passage to both of these tonight. This has to be at the county, with the county commissioners, on the 30th. So this is, I'm sensitive.
Any questions for Cindy?
For honor, I would move for the third and final reading of ordinance Y 33, entitled in summary form only, and placed before the final passage.
Second. Thank you, a motion of the second for the third and final reading of ordinance Y 33 in summary, title in summary form only, and that it be placed before you all for final passage. All in favor, say aye.
I just had a quick question, sorry.
Yep, go ahead.
Sorry, just because this is new to me, Cindy, looking at the paperwork on that, you're really just asking for an increase of $20,789 from the, that's just additional to the year, correct?
Correct, so the, there's a couple different things here going, so the levy lift piece of the general property tax levy is not really addressed here, and the reason it's not is because the citizens have that six-year levy to increase at 6% every year. So according to the Department of Revenue and county, the county assessor, that isn't even what we're talking about on this first ordinance, on Y 33. This is just the regular, the regular general tax, and yes, that increases at $20,000, that's before new construction, and it's before refunds, but yes, that is what I'm asking for the increase on. And then on the EMS levy, there's a much smaller amount, but that's increasing.
Right, so it's just, yeah, and it's just those amounts, it's nothing more, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
1% on both of them.
All right, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Any opposed? Okay, ordinance Y 33 passes. Carrie, are you on?
Yes, ordinance Y 33, an ordinance setting the regular property tax levy for the year 2023 and providing for the effective date hereof.
Thank you, Carrie. Councilmember Overhauser, councilmember Bartels, councilmember Wiseman, councilmember Hilton, councilmember Postuma.
Aye.
Thank you, ordinance Y 33 passes. Moving on to ordinance Y 34, this is the EMS tax levy.
For honor, I would move for the third and final reading of ordinance Y 34, title in summary form only, and placed before the final passage.
Thank you, a motion of the second for the third and final reading of ordinance Y 34, EMS tax levy, entitled in summary form only, and that it be placed before you all for final passage. Any questions or comments for Cindy? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Carrie?
Ordinance Y 34, an ordinance setting the EMS tax levy for the year 2023 and providing for the effective date hereof.
Thank you, Carrie. Councilmember Overhauser, councilmember Bartels, councilmember Wiseman, councilmember Hilton, and councilmember Postuma.
Aye.
Thank you, ordinance Y 34 passes. Thank you, Cindy. Moving on to ordinance Y 35, this is requesting only the first reading of our budget ordinance.
Yes, this is our 2023, kind of our first, first look at our budget ordinance, all 26 funds, total budget of $43,442,200. This, this will change likely after we talk next Tuesday, so this is what was brought forward already, but I know there's some discussion about discretionary that's going to happen, there might be some discussion about some rates, there might be some of those kind of things that happen. So I just want a first read to get this on record, that this is where we are now, and then as a result of what the discussions are next week, then when we meet on the 13th for the second and third reading, I can incorporate those changes in at that time. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Cindy. Any questions for Cindy, comments?
For honor, I would move for the first reading ordinance Y 35, and with subsequent readings to follow on the 13th.
Okay. You have a motion and second for the first reading of ordinance Y 35, entitled in summary form only, and that future readings be deferred to our December 13th city council. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Carrie?
Ordinance Y 35, an ordinance adopting the budget for the city of Cheney, Washington for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2023, and providing for the effective date hereof.
Thank you, Carrie. Okay, that concludes action items, we don't have any other business. Mark, do you have any staff reports?
Happy Thanksgiving, streets may be a little flick, especially getting out of town, be careful on your way home.
Thank you. Very simple. Very quick, very quick, could you, you might touch on just the time card policy that's in, growing, Mark?
What are you hoping to talk about?
Just that, basically, with the, what you're working on independently, but obviously, we have transitioned from paper time cards to a new system, how that system works.
Yeah.
What's the policy?
As council approved, we are in the midst of implementing a new electronic timekeeping system, going away from our antiquated paper timekeeping system, which is very inefficient, and becoming more and more difficult for our payroll department to process on database. So new implementation, this has gone on for far too long, and we have struggled, but we see what at the end of the tunnel, it would require employees to clock in and out, submit any time off requests, all be electronic, no paper anymore, which brings the to the century, it allows us for better data to collect up overtime and, you know, those sorts of things that I know you account members are interested in, so, you know, just, it's kind of where we need the, in terms of efficiency and tracking of all, all of our hours, and ensuring that employees are here when they're supposed to.
And that's a tough one, because all those labor codes have to be individually entered and, and hopefully narrowed down, and it's a tough one.
And that's the important thing, you put someone that's unemployed in, you know, the correct code, which in the end of the day helps, you know, supervisor and then final payroll, you know, sort of review, make sure employees pay check their rights, you know, that stuff, you know.
Ultimately, that policy could be, obviously, key specific to different departments.
Yeah, it could, we may treat different departments, it just depends, you know, for instance, police may be treated differently than Cindy's office, just because of the nature of their work. You know, as I mentioned, you know, when police officers are coming into town, if they're, you know, in their vehicle, they're in their, you know, uniforms, soon as they hit, you know, sick limits, they're off control, you know, whereas somebody else that works with the twopane, they might actually be in their seat, as in their ready to log in and, so there's a little intricacy that we can work through with that. So we'll have some general policies and maybe some more efficiency.
So that would apply to field workers, everybody?
Everybody.
You too, yeah. No, not, not council. Everybody from, from me, you know, to every other chapter.
Well, it's, it's a change in how we do business, a change always comes with a little bit of challenges at times, I would imagine, because employees have to do something different than they're used to.
So I'm all in favor of electronic payroll, but I think it's also important, like you said, to make it department personnel specific, especially field workers, police, fire, public works, fire department, people who are in and out constantly, have to come in and sign in when there could be an emergency of middle of night or something.
So that's, you know, the way the policy is written out, you know, the callbacks, let's say somebody has trouble in the middle of night, we're not going to have them clock in before they actually go out to the emergency, we're going to handle that through this request, where they just put in their hours, wait the next day they come to work. It'll all be written out in the policy.
Will they be able to use it on their cell phones?
Yeah, not as we stand right now. We are, we are limiting this to city devices. So we just need better control, to be quite honest.
So you're, you're creating a whole policy?
Yeah.
I just would like to say, thank you for that, you know, for your time and your hard work again, guys at sleep, you know, happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Drive safe, go home.
So Thursday, 9:00 AM, at the Cheney Church and Tribe, I promise you, you will feel so much better about yourself when you're shopping your big turkey today, the burn calories off in the morning, you'll feel way better about yourself.
Where do they start?
At the high school.
At the high school?
9:00 AM, it is $5, the proceeds go to the Cheney High School, and it's their major fundraiser. Then you don't have to run it, it's three miles.
I understand, about 26.1 miles.
Three miles, you can walk it, it goes right past your house, and they give tons of drawings surprises, if we sold 50, it's like you're there for an hour, getting out by.
Well, that feels like a special invite, I may have to come see you Thursday at 9:00.
The people there, it's great.
Thank you. Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and then also would just like to say thank you to our staff, you're doing a great job of presenting budgets, and I know you're putting in a ton of work to do those, and so thanks so much for doing a great job of presenting those and giving us vision for our city and making us a great city out here on the West Plain, so thanks a lot. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thanks, Mark. Any final words? Move to adjourn?
Adios.
Motion of the second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sure there was no opposition to that.